We'd like to welcome everyone out to the Highland City Council on August 2nd, 2022. It is 7:01 PM. We have a full council here tonight. We'd like to begin our city council meeting by having an invocation by council member Brittany Bills, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. Brittany?
Our good Father and Good Members, we're so very grateful tonight for all the many blessings that have been given. We're grateful for the worship that we've been able to receive and we're grateful to be gathered together as friends and neighbors. We ask for thy Spirit to be with us tonight that we will make good decisions and be kind and respectful in our comments and that we will always be resourceful with what we've been given. We also ask that please have a special blessing to be with the good people in Ukraine and Russia and all those who are struggling, who don't have all of their rights and privileges that we have. Please bless us as we go through our Highland Flame Week that everybody will be able to safely participate in activities and have a good time and feel closer together as a community. For this, may Jesus be with us.
Thank you, Brittany. If ever and all, please stand. Join with me in citing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when I mention, under God, indivisible, with reason and justice, for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have set apart in our city council meeting a time for unscheduled public appearances. We'd like to invite any of those that would like to come up and address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Tonight, we do not have any public hearings, so I'd recommend if it's even something on the agenda, maybe it'd be appropriate for you to come up at this time, if you'll keep your comments to under three minutes. So, we'd like to invite anyone to come up at this time. And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Maureen Everhard. What I'm seeking is a very narrow policy exception for some fencing ordinance. I live on Catty Lane, about eighty-six yards away from a tee box. And I've got some materials I've presented for you. It's posing a real serious threat to my family, especially my grandchildren. I've got golf balls that hit my house at an alarming frequency. In fact, today while I was preparing these comments, standing, talking to my contractor who's installing the fence, almost two golf balls hit us. So, I've got a proposal. This is not like a theoretical risk. These are, I'm realizing this risk on a regular basis. I'm literally twenty-five yards away from the straight line from this tee box. And the balls come in at such high speeds, they've actually, they're penetrating through the stucco of my house. And so, I've got one wall that is literally, it looks like, it's not a fair comparison, it's not Ukraine, but it is, it looks like a war zone, like the side of my house. I've never asked anybody for, to, you know, pay for anything. But my contractors have put fifteen-foot-high poles, and some of my neighbors have put these into. It's really obscure. I've got pictures for you. The golf netting would be, they almost blends in with the trees, but it would protect the side of my house and the playground that is in that deadly zone. I've got a case in here where a small thirteen-year-old girl was struck and killed in the head with a hockey puck. And the number of Newtons that are delivered with a six-ounce hockey puck are the same level of Newtons that could strike my one, my two-year-old nephew, grandson, and my three-year-old granddaughter. They live with us, and so, I'm really worried about it. The walking path also, that is right behind my house. I've been out there working in my yard, and golf balls have ricocheted, almost hit mother and their daughter, mother and their child, walking their dog. So, there's a, there's a real risk there on that one section of path that's in that, I won't say call it a kill zone, but a very dangerous section. It's so close. It's, the driving range is so narrow. So, I'm not asking for any money, but what I mean, I have suggested a very narrow policy exception that would not set a precedent. And it would include like six homes, I think in the entire city that surround, that have a similar situation than I do. And they're my neighbors. So, with that, I would submit this for your consideration.
Would you mind giving that to Erin Wells right here at the inn, and she can get information to the rest of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and we have, is your contact information on there?
I think Brent has it.
My address is on there.
Perfect. And he spoke with Brent earlier today, so we do have contact information.
And I've submitted a, I've submitted a fence request, a permit request, so it's in there too. Thank you for listening, and please approve it.
Mr. Mayor? If it's okay, it sounds like the council might, we're, this is kind of liberal. If they would like to ask a question, we'll let them kind of do that. If you'd like to go ahead, Scott, and I think if you had one.
So, I jog on that trail all the time. I was there this morning. Have you had communication with Cedar Hills Golf Course?
I have. They, they, they're not very willing to return my calls, so I've called the golf course. They do set aside some money to patch, fix problems. But they said, "Call the city," so I've called the city of Cedar Hills, the mayor's office. They're not, they don't return my calls very, you know, they're not returning my calls.
I will be with the mayor of Cedar Hills on Thursday night as we're heading to meeting, so if I can extract that information, I can, I'll follow up there too.
Yeah. I'm willing to bear the cost. I, you know, I just need approval to hang that golf net. And you'll see the picture. I mean, it's very unintrusive.
And you want to do this on your property?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. It's on my property. We've had, you know, we've marked it all out. I've talked to my neighbors, and they're in totally agreement. So, anyways, you know, it's cost me about seventy thousand dollars. And they put it in. I thought my contractor pulled the permits. He didn't. The poles are already there. So, now I'm in a panic. That's why I'm coming to you today. It's like, so.
So ultimately, he's asking for us to update code for regarding fence permits because this would count as a fence, and we only allow, you know, certain heights of fence. So, updating the code for a very narrow exception along golf courses to allow for that golf netting to protect homes.
Tim, did you have a question?
I have a question for Rob, actually. Oh, okay, if that's okay.
Rob's our attorney.
Yes.
Would we be able to define this in a narrow enough fashion that it would not set precedent? I know the gentleman believes that's the case, but do you believe that's the case also?
Yes. I've seen in other cities, not particularly with golf courses, but, you know, fencing rules that are specific, you know, say around trails or canals and open waterways. Some cities have rules that say if you're within X number of feet of this, you can do something. So, it'd be crafted in a similar way of, if you are immediately adjacent to a golf course or within a certain amount of feet, you're allowed to do, I mean, we've done that for other fencing restrictions, so yes.
Okay, and then the other question is, is the gentleman, do you believe that he should be a hundred percent responsible for the cost of this? Or is the golf course creating a nuisance, or because of the design flaw of the golf course in relation to homes?
So, this has come up, I think, in other contexts as well, the different golf course. There is potential issue that the person who hits the ball is negligent, so they could be responsible. But how you can figure out who hit a ball, you know, if you're not at, you don't see who it is, it just comes up to a new hole in your wall. You could maybe go after the golf course, but there, it's, it's really hard to say. Someone hit a ball really bad, they hit a bad shank, and so the golf course has to pay for it.
So, you're near the Cedar Hills Golf Course driving range?
No, it's not the driving range. It is hole number two, which has a, you'll see there's a picture of it. I've given you the aerials and everything with, I walked it out and measured it today. It's, I'm like eighty-six yards to a hundred and sixty-six yards from the, from the white tee box, and it's only twenty-five yards as the crow flies to the left. So, if they just shank it a little bit, it comes into our yards. And some really shank it, it goes over the homes into the street or into the neighbors' yards on the other side. And my wife's almost been hit in the head while she's working in the garden. It's a real concern of mine. It's just, it's really dangerous. I won't even sit on my, I won't even sit on the back porch. Like, it's that dangerous, so you don't sit on the back porch. Not, not while someone's teeing off.
Can you see the picture up above here? Is this the area? Is that, is that the tee boxes that they're going, or are they?
Yes, yes. So, it's, it's a little bit, it's where the water hazard is. Yes, see the water hazard? My home is the one on the tip of, of the water hazard, on the far right side.
So, this is a par five then, so?
It's a par, I checked today, it's a par four.
Well, most people are going to use a driver, which means?
Oh, it's a one. Yeah, they're hitting as hard as they can.
So, which means there's less control and?
Right. And if you look at the tee box, the tee box is tucked real, I mean, it is literally maybe six or seven paces from the path. And so, if they're not, they, they need to angle themselves at almost a forty-five-degree angle to make the fairway. A lot of guys aren't. Like, you can look at my, the thing, I've got, I've got hundreds of golf balls, hundreds. I'm almost, we started giving them away. I have a little rental property. We give them away, a little gift, like, all the expensive balls, we package them, give them away. That's how many golf balls are in my area.
So, so what would be the process?
What's that address?
Four, five, nine, four.
So, so?
Come on by, I got tons.
Any probing ones?
Oh, yeah. We got them all. We have all the really?
Let's kind of bring it back in. What the process is, let's have, Erin will get the information out. If the council feels that something they want to do, they will put that on an agenda item to look at. It has to go to Planning Commission first, you know, so it'll be feathered through our Planning Department. It would be looking through the attorney on anything that way, and it would go through planning first, and we'll let you be aware if that's a process we want to kind of start down. I will, I've lived on cottages on the green here in the Alpine Country Club, and I would always, if I was mowing, I'd look and go, "Okay, is no one on that green?" So, I can, because I'd go collect about eight golf balls a night, you know, if someone had to get a little hook, they would hit in my backyard. So, I'm sensitive to what you're saying.
Yeah. Should, I'm assuming I should hold off on putting the net up? I mean, the poles are already?
Yeah, well, because you, you need to make sure we have the ordinance change, or else that would be a zoning violation. So, it's kind of, I'm sorry, it'll be a process. It's not going to happen within a couple of weeks. It will take a little bit of time, because it has to be noticed, the Planning Commission, and it would come back to city council for them to vote on. So, there's a process to do that change.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for coming. Are there some others that'd like to come up and address the council on any issues? Who's coming up?
My name's Eric Davenport. I'm general counsel for Homes Homes Inc., we're a home builder. I'm also secretary of the corporation. The only reason I'm standing up is just to put a face to work number, item number eight. I'm actually, it's a proposal for a two-lot subdivision. I'm actually going to be building one of the homes on there, so I'll be joining you here as a resident of Highland. And just wanted to thank your staff. They've been awesome, and just wanted to let you know who I was. Nothing else.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to come up and address anything to the council? Seeing none, we'll at this time go ahead and close our public appearances, and we now have some presentation. Before we begin any presentation, our item number A, we'd like to let publicly be aware that we have now had a change in a city administrator. Our long-term city administrator, Nathan Crane, has been let go for not for cause with the city, and we now have an interim city administrator, which is Erin Wells. Want to introduce everyone to Erin Wells. She will be our interim city administrator. The plan would be that in the next several weeks, we will put out a proposal for looking for a new city administrator, and we'll be seeking applications to be able to come in. That change happened last Tuesday with Nathan Crane, and we appreciated his service in the city. I think he started with the city as the city planner, and that back in 2010, became the city administrator in 2013, and there was a change last Tuesday. So, we appreciate Erin stepping up, as well as all those staff and employees that, over the last week, was a little bit going. And so, we, we just want to tell them that we appreciate them stepping up and the time that they've put in and the concern and the love they show for the city. So, at this time, we'll also now move on to item number two B, which is recognition of Roger Dixon. I'll turn the time over to Kim Riddella.
I am really excited that I am the one that gets to do this recognition because not only have I been able to serve with Roger on the library board, but Roger and Deanne are my neighbors. In fact, I get a little teary-eyed thinking about them because my family moved here about twelve, twelve years ago, and I still to remember this day, walking into this ward, into a church. We did not know anyone. It was our first move as a family. And who was the first person that sat beside me? Deanne Dixon. So nice, welcomed me, showed me where to go. Who was the first person that sat beside my husband? Roger. Anyway, so I am really excited that I get to do this for him. So, just a little bit about Roger. He can be considered one of the founding fathers of the present Highland City Library. He was on the Planning Commission while the new city center was being planned, and then served as a library board chair during the time that the board was formulating both many of the policies, a library needs to function, and its first long-range strategic plan. After a brief hiatus from the board to serve an LDS service mission, which was very dearly missed in our neighborhood, Roger returned first to the library foundation and then to the library board. He served as library board chair a second time from 2017 to 2021. During that time, he oversaw the creation of the children's room and the acceptance of the library as a full member of the Northern Utah County Library Cooperative. He was also, has worked diligently to create the library board bylaws and procedure documents. Through all his service, Roger has been both a voice of reason and experience and a fierce advocate for the library and its staff. And so, us as a city council, we'd like to recognize Roger and, of course, his wonderful wife, Deanne, for the hundreds of hours of service they've given to Highland City and to the Highland City Library. So, please come on up here, and we have some things for them. Deanne?
Flowers for you, and I got you a hug. Oh, I love these guys. Oh, Roger, this is a hug for Roger to say appreciation for ten years of dedicated service and leadership on the Highland City Library Board. And then also, we have a very special pin that I am sure people will, beauty people will wear every Sunday church. This is a Highland City service pin that only a few select people receive. So, yes, thank you so much.
Yes, speech.
Please do.
Well, I just want to say it was my pleasure to serve in the various capacities of the city, especially with the library board. And Scott, Scott and I served for a number of years on there. And Erin was a great support during what we call the troubles. She was very helpful and did a lot for the, for the library. And it's so great to have Donna here. And we really enjoy, appreciate her efforts and her service. And also the mayor, as a, as a member of the city council, was a good supporter of the library, and we appreciate that. So, thank you very much, and good luck to all of you, and good luck to Donna and the rest of the library board in the future.
Thank you.
And may I, may I just mention, I have some family members here tonight. So, my son Eric is here, and he will soon be moving to Highland. They bought a lot here, and they'll be moving here. I have granddaughter Sienna, and a good friend, Lucas, and my brother-in-law, John Pearson, and Carol, and Holly, and Lincoln, and Dan, my son. So, is that camera, everybody?
I heard there's an opening on the library board.
Oh, there's, there you are. Thank you. Great. Yeah, Liz and Eric will be moving here in, within a year or so. It'll be great to have them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah. I'd just like to say one thing. I, as Roger mentioned, I served on the library board with him. And Roger was always a voice for organization and decor, and a man of great reason. And I enjoyed working with him. And I just want to make sure you keep your library card.
Thank you, Roger. We'll now move on to item number two C, which is a report from our beautification committee. We have a member from the beautification committee here. If you push this slide, try to push it on the slide, I think. There you go.
Ah, there we go. My name's Kerry Wise. I'm chairman of the Highland Beautification Committee. Just to give you a little bit of history, I've never been here for this meeting before. I, when I was first called to this position or asked to do this, I was a retired employee of the state of Utah. And as things have changed, I now have a job. So, I have not been able to do and accomplish as much as I had really intended to do when I accepted this position. We have the community, the beautification committee operates the community garden. And this is a picture of Loretta. She coordinates the garden, the plots. She collects the rent. She does all the paperwork associated with that. She's very much appreciated. She is a great help to this, and she basically just handles everything associated with the, with the community garden.
Those who maybe are not aware, this community garden is back behind, behind our fire station by the Descana condos. So, that's just, it's an area where a lot of them can go, and they rent a little spot to build a grow.
It's also, the, the people who rent it, some of them live to the south in those homes, and some people live in the apartments. It's currently, we have seventeen plots. All seventeen are rented out. They are rented for forty dollars a year. As you can see, some of them have, have tried to put their own touch to it. They've, they've added their chairs to socialize. To my, my thinking is that this might be an opportunity that if Highland should ever win the Lotto, they could, they could increase, we could make this a much more desirable location to socialize. We also do the backyard of the month. This is our current backyard of the month for Aga, for July. Can't remember. Anyway, one of those. Anyway, we, we do one every, I, we select one every month. They get twenty-five-dollar Ace gift, Ace hardware gift card and two bags of Oakdale mulch. It's a, it's a great opportunity to meet a lot of people, for me anyway. And this one is one we did back in 2021. We show up to these guys' house on a Sunday morning at nine o'clock, or maybe it was ten o'clock. They were so exuberant and so excited. It was, it was just so much fun to, for them to receive that. And not only that, they were all dressed for a picture. We have the backyard tours coming up for the Highland Flame. It's, it's one of the reasons I got involved with this, with this organization is because I, we had been here for several years, and they quit having it. And I, and so that was why I wanted to join, was because we could have the backyard garden tours again. Anyway, that is, my presentation is short and sweet, and I thank you for inviting me, and thank you.
Council, any questions of Kerry?
So, in the past, the beautification committee sometimes has went into areas of the city and had little weeding projects and that. I think they worked at Lambert Park one year and things like that. Is your organization still doing that a little bit?
Yes, there are some that still do that. I haven't been able to keep up with them all. There's some people, there's a, there's a woman who takes care of Larson Park.
Larson Park, yeah, I said Lambert, yeah.
And Josh, Josh works with her. And we've had some of them who've wanted to move on to do other things, and they've resigned. So, like I said, that's one of those things that I wish we could do better on.
You know, Kerry, I just want to tell you, thank you. I mean, it is something that means a lot. It's funny, I had a neighbor that just rechanged all their front yard, and he says, "Hey, you now can send more of those who will select the month, yard of the month." And I was going, "Okay, I can't go put those little pressures on," but, you know, it is something that helps those. I saw that you had one that had seagulls escaping, then you have others that have. I think it helps beautify our community, and appreciate that. I know there's been, you know, several others in the past. I, you know, we've had some groups this summer, I don't know if you're aware, we've had some that have helped over at the cemetery clean up, to try to get the bark all around and get some flowers. We've had some tree planting projects. I know up in the viewpoint, we're going to have one over in the Windsor Meadow neighborhood with some trees. And so, this beautification is something we are cognizant on. We're interested, and we recognize we probably have some trees that need to be replaced, but unfortunately, those tree replacements are not coming back as cheap as we'd, or inexpensive as we were hoping. And so, we're kind of looking at options on that, but thank you for your service. I, I've been, if no one's been to one of the backyard garden tours, I agree with you. That's actually, I enjoyed, I think it comes up on this Thursday. Now, there was only two, do we have two homes or three homes on Thursday?
Three homes.
Three? Because I saw in the, in the one thing, three, but on another, I only saw two addresses, so. But is this going to be one of them with a waterfall feature?
Yes.
I might want to go see that one. So, thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to item presentation number two D. It's our press rise water presentation. We have Tyson's here, and I've seen Ernie also is here, so I'm sure we'll hear hopefully from both. we'll hear hopefully from both.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just got a short presentation of how the water usage is going so far this year. So this is the current flow and the past flow at the American Fork River. You can see we're a little bit better than last year in July. And then over the weekend, that last little bit on the right, it just dropped right off. And now we're 40% of normal, which is still better than we were last year, but we're, we're still in a drought. So it lasted a lot longer than we expected it to, which was a huge help. We were able to keep our wells off and not use as much groundwater. And we haven't been taking in very much Provo River water up to this point because the canyon did so much better than we thought it would. So this, really hard to see. The top line is 2020, the middle line, 2021, and the bottom line is this year. And you can see that last year was a drought. We used less than the year before. And this year, we're using quite a bit less than 2021. And those graphs, the red represents 2020, the green, whatever color that is, represents 2021. And then the blue is this present year. So just another way to look at it.
So is this less usage by the citizens?
Yeah. So, yeah, sorry. Yep. This shows the actual usage that the citizens and the parks and churches are using. So on this page, it actually says 14% less than last year and 23% less than 2020. So the residents are doing a fantastic job of conserving water. But we still want to let them know that this, we're still in a pretty big drought, even though last night's rain really helped. Hopefully we get a few more of those storms. So we still need to conserve, but they're doing a fantastic job. The Provo River status is actually better than we thought. We were thinking it would be about a 60% allocation is what they were telling us at the beginning of the year and actually up until just a few weeks ago. But they've since told us that it'll be similar to last year. So we still have that 1,205 acre feet of holdover that we saved last year. We'd, we'd like to do that again this year, just in case next year's this bad or worse. We'd like to save a little bit more water there and we're on track to do that. So if we just keep going how we're going, we're gonna accomplish that goal. And then we have started just this past week to take in quite a bit more water from the Provo River. And that's because the American Fork Canyon has stopped. Well, it's about half of what it was.
So is that my signal? So I went to go change my filter, clean my filter about two weeks ago. And it was actually in really pretty condition. I go, okay, that must tell me I am on AF, the river water. But now that we just switched to Provo, we're gonna start getting, that's where we gotta start really watching our filters. Cause that's, that's where it starts to get a little more mossy and grassy.
Yeah. Unfortunately, those sources aren't filtered the best. Over by your house, they're filtered somewhat. But yes, it is a dirtier water than what we usually get out of the canyon. So it would be a good idea to pay attention to your filter a little closer. And then, yeah, just more public awareness. We're planning on just updating the, just telling the residents how good of a job they're doing. Keep up with the newsletter and the website, texts and social media. Do you have any questions for me?
Just one question. Has the groundwater been a little better this year?
It did definitely come up this spring and we've been seeing a decline ever since we stopped letting water into the debris, the debris basin. So it is on the way back down. It kind of does this every year, but the past couple of years have been such dry years that it's gone down further than normal. So we're trying to, trying to make that back up.
So, so you're saying the debris basin by American Fork Canyon that catches all of the stuff coming in. What, what you're saying is that if we have water sitting in there, we see it in our groundwater with it coming up. And how, I mean, is it pretty fast we see it in our groundwater?
Yeah. I mean, within a couple of months, I would probably say that you would notice a difference. But yeah, that is a designated aquifer recharge. So it has the right soil content that the water goes down into the aquifer pretty quickly. And I think Ernie's gonna talk about some more of that stuff. So if you want to know more. Any other questions?
No, thank you for keeping watch on the waters. You know, at least it's kind of good news this year. It sounds like our residents are, also your numbers, when I'm just looking up here, up to date, 14% less than 2021. And then it's 23% less than 2020. So we're down, I mean, we're starting to see the residents are, are, are being, you know, cautious on their watering. Like last night, I went and turned everything off saying, okay, we probably had a good rainstorm. You know, make sure there's no water coming on. So hopefully can.
Yeah. And those storms really help because especially if people turn off their water, because.
But as a city, we don't have any auto, like I noticed that some of the cities are starting to put in sprinkler control that's wifi. Have we started doing that on any of our systems?
Andy could probably answer that better.
So Mayor, we don't have any that are automated yet. The first one that we'll have that'll be automated and connected to the internet, if you will, to be able to monitor the weather will be the one at Mercer Hollow. We're doing there. But part of what we're looking at with our meter project, this is part of that meter project, bringing on smart controllers in all of our parks as well. Because that's probably the number one complaint we get is you guys are telling us to conserve water. And yet yesterday in the rainstorm, the park was watering, right? And people don't realize that we have about 200 controllers and just even go turn them on and turn them off is a week of driving. But that is a big part, you know, one of our main components that we're looking at with our meters and how the city can do its part is bring on the smart controllers and start to be reactive in that way.
Can, can I give a personal experience? So on Saturday, and of course, my neighborhood's on a different irrigation system. We have our own pump and things. Interesting enough, we haven't had to go to our deep well until the last week or so, which has been good. So when you charge that aquifer, it helps us a lot because our other well's pretty shallow. But for about 150 bucks, I put in a new water controller, or I should say my wife bought it and went and put it in. But I spent four hours programming it because I'm not good that way. But it was cool because when it ran yesterday, it automatically shut everything down. And I kept thinking, oh, you know, is it really gonna rain? But they went by the weather report, shut it off. We got plenty of rain. And so I think if we have kind of more of these automatic things, we could save quite a bit of water.
And I think, I agree with you. We will save a lot of water and it's also a part of us leading the way, right? And saying, you know, this is what we need to change to as a, as a community. So that we're being the wisest we can with our resources.
It was pretty cool, I thought.
Well, thank you. Is there any other questions for Tyson? Now, Ernie's gonna talk about when we do the, they're at the, they're out there by American Fork Canyon. So that will be when Ernie comes up, we can ask questions. Ernie John's kind of over in American Fork Canyon. So we'll just save those questions for when Ernie comes up, if we have any.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay. We now are gonna move on to our consent items. We have one consent item, consent item number three A, which is approval of the city minutes from June 7th.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve the meeting minutes from June 7, 2022 without any amendments.
I'll second.
So a motion by Scott, second by Kim. If there's no other amendments, we ready for a vote? That passes five to zero. We will now move on to item number four, which is, which is a public hearing. It is an ordinance and text amendment for the definition of a main dwelling. We, Kelly, I believe you have that, which is our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A little bit of background on this. On June 21st, we did kind of preliminarily talk about this with the council, where we received direction to move forward with this text amendment regarding definition of what's attached and detached when it comes to additions. And the current development code, basically we have a definition of a home or a main dwelling. And then we have a separate call out for additions and what they need to meet in order to be considered part of the main dwelling. And that's these things listed below, which is the connecting roofline, connecting foundation, four connecting walls, which just essentially means that it creates a box. And then uninhibited interior access between that addition and the main dwelling. And 60% of one common wall with the existing dwelling. With all those requirements, there's also the existing exception to all of those requirements, which is the breezeway. This is the exact wording in there. The structure is connected by a breezeway with a common roofline, common footing and foundation, and a minimum width of six feet. So that roofline connection has to be at least six feet wide. And then foundation separation of less than 10 feet. So basically saying that, it's just confusing because it has common footing foundation and then it says foundation separation. And so it's anticipating the fact that these structures are gonna be 10 feet apart with the six foot wide roofline connection. And so that's what we're addressing with this amendment. The proposed amendment, you'll see, there are a couple of changes before and after planning commission. So just keep in mind, this is before planning commission where we were keeping most of current code as far as the 60%. We, the intention was to change the wording from the 60% of a common wall to make it more clear what that actually means. So the proposed was 60% or more to be attached and in common with the original dwelling. The connection shall be 60% of the length of the portion of the addition that faces the main dwelling. This is, it's kind of complicated. And me and Rob thought of five, 10 different ways to word this. And we looked at a couple of other cities that had something like this and kind of combined and played with phrasing. This was the best we could come up with to try to, well, address any loopholes that we came up with by ourselves. And then calling out structures connected by a breezeway shall not be considered part of the main dwelling. So architecturally, people can still put breezeways in. It's just that that connection or that addition is considered an accessory structure and will have to meet accessory structure standards. Did you, did you have a question?
Well, usually the accessories, structures can only be five to 7% of the total property. Is that correct?
That is correct. So that would be applicable as well as height maximum setbacks, et cetera.
Right.
We sent out the appropriate public hearing notices for both planning commission and city council. So at planning commission, they held their public hearing. We received no public comment. After discussion and kind of trying to figure out what the intent of the proposal was, they recommended approval, six oh, with two recommended stipulations. One was to include visual drawings in the code for compliance and non-compliance, with the intent to make it self-explanatory for residents that are looking at this code. And then the other stipulation was to change the 60% to be replaced by majority of, so anything over 50%. And their discussion, it was 60% just seemed like too much to require for a connection. I'll show you. These are the illustrations I made. Basically, there are two for permitted and two for not permitted. I'll explain this real quick. So when we say the total length facing the existing dwelling, the total length of the addition facing is technically, watch my mouse, is this plus this line that's facing the existing dwelling. So that's, this is the total. And then for majority of, so greater than 50% of that total length has to be connected to the home with all of that criteria. So that connecting roofline, common footing foundation, uninhibited interior access, et cetera. This is another example, just on the back of the home. You have to take that total length and then at, greater than 50% has to be attached to the home. Here are two examples of something that would not be permitted. This addition, obviously that connection is far less than that majority of when you take this total length. And then here's another example, although there is uninhibited interior access, roof connection, et cetera, it does not meet that greater than 50% connection minimum. And also in the ordinance that's presented in the staff report, the majority of is presented as being replaced. So we just included planning commission's recommendations or the stipulations in the attached ordinance. So that motion to approve is based on the planning commission's recommendation. And then here's the motion to deny if the council sees fit.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes. So, we're not talking about the entire perimeter measurements. You're referring exclusively to, to parallel lines.
It's linear feet.
Geometrically.
Correct.
And then the other line. So you're not counting another parallel line. The part that looks like a, the state of Utah?
Yes.
Was that done purposely?
No.
That little section, that little section. I just, I don't see where the pool is for the great Salt Lake. But the, the section that is also parallel but shorter, that would not be included in the calculation.
It is for the total length. That's why, it's kind of confusing because I have that little bracket on the other side that's not facing. But my intent, it's the equivalent of that top part of Utah plus that whole western portion.
Plus this.
Yes. Equals that total length. I just couldn't make an easy way to understand it having it on the other side, if that makes sense, at least by a small visual.
Fifty one, 50.1% of this line?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Rather than, our current code requires 60 with a breezeway exception. So it's like we have it stricter in one section, but then we have a total exception. So it's kind of, kind of allowing it or taking away the breezeway exception, but giving a little more leeway on the percentage of a common wall.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question. So a lot of this change in code was driven, or is being derived by, I don't know the right term, but the one building was built in my neighborhood. And I assume that they used the breeway, breezeway exception to build an accessory structure that's twice as big as their house and twice as tall, which has caused a lot of stress in the city. But I have yet to see where the breezeway is on that structure. So I'm not sure how it even meets that.
Yeah. I followed up with our building inspector. He went out for inspections and he said the footings are in for that connection. He used a different contractor for the two.
So there will be a breezeway connection.
Yes, that's correct. It's basically, they have a 10-foot foundation separation between the main dwelling and this hallway that has walls. And that's why it's, looks like or appears like it's so far away from the main dwelling is because they have an actual hallway where we don't have that 60% minimum of a common wall because it's part of the addition, if that makes sense. It's part of the connection to the breezeway.
So if this particular structure was built after the change in the ordinance, that structure would have had to been adjacent to the house, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And yeah, 50, or over 50% of that length, depending on what you approve, would have to be attached to it. So it would have been.
What about the heights? Could they, could they attached it and had the heights? Because is, is that, is that the common roofline? Even though, I mean, that's just your, your house is 20, but the roofline there is 35. Could they have done that with the 50, you know?
I'm sure architecturally, they could come up with something unique to have a connecting roofline, but still have it be taller. But technically, because it's attached, the max height would be 35 feet. So I'm like, they come up with all different kinds of architectural things. I'm sure they could.
So we have a number of homes in the city that are 35 feet tall.
That's correct.
And so we weren't trying to dissuade that. But I think the purpose of this is to kind of dissuade, using this loophole to essentially build an accessory structure on bigger than five to 7% of the property, right?
Correct.
So I, I, it's just generated a lot of controversy in the city. And I'm sorry about that because I know the people and they're good people. But I think it's been a problem. I think Brittany told me she's had more complaints about that structure than the fee increases.
It's possible I've been that. Also, thank you for teaching the youth of Highland about geometry. I'm gonna be telling my kids. I'm going to be telling my kids that, yes, this is why you need geometry in real life.
I know, right?
Yes, well done.
Thanks.
Counsel, if there's no, nothing else, we're going to open this up for public hearing, and we'll bring it back to counsel, if that's okay. At this time, we will open this item up for public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come up and address the counsel on item number four, which is a text amendment for definition of a main dwelling. Public hearing is now open. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. We bring it back to counsel either for a motion or further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed amendment to section ten dash one oh two, definitions to revise the definition of a main dwelling with the two stipulations recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Kim, second by Sarah. Any further discussion? If not, we will go to vote. Seeing none, let's go ahead and go vote. That passes five to zero. We'll now move on to item number five, which is another public hearing and ordinance change, and a text amendment to the newspaper notices. Kelly, this is also you.
Thank you, mayor and council members. This is the other one that was presented to y'all on June twenty-first. The council did express, they were supportive of removing the newspaper public noticing requirements, but for the applications that impacted adjacent property owners, the request was to still have, well, to have five-hundred-foot radius notices, the letter sent out to those residents for these specific applications that require the newspaper noticing. The only one that's applicable to specific properties is rezones. And so this proposed amendment is to include the five-hundred-foot radius for rezones, whereas text amendments, general plans, all of those amendments apply to the city as a whole. Rezones are typically a subject property, was how we came to that conclusion. Background as to why this came up, back in 2021, the Utah legislative update, they did remove newspaper noticing requirements for the general plan amendments, annexations, and adoptions or amendments of land use regulations. The proposed amendment, technically, we had two versions that were presented to the planning commission. One was just doing exactly what the council requested of us initially, which is to remove those noticing requirements and add the five-hundred-foot radius for rezones. As staff, as we were going through it, there were lots of things that were inconsistent or should be updated because they either didn't, they were up to state code, or it was just, I'll give you an idea. Basically, for text amendments and rezones, we had two sections that were dedicated to telling us how to process text amendments and rezones. And so the proposed, the version two of the proposed amendment is to eliminate that first one, and then our second one's actually in a specific article called, like actual amendments to title on zone map is what that is, chapter nine. So it's having all of that just in one place a lot easier when we don't have things that say the same thing in two places, or say slightly different things in two places for the same thing. And then it still includes that five-hundred-foot radius notice, and then eliminates requirements for annexations that are not consistent with the Utah state code. Typically with annexations, because it's such a specific process with state code, we usually follow state code to a T, and there are some things that are in development code that aren't consistent with it. So it's just updating it based on their codes, which most of it, we are just referencing to that specific state code section, if that makes sense. So if people are reading our code, we refer to the state code section that tells you exactly how to do it. We sent out appropriate public hearing notices for both planning commission and city council for this public hearing. For planning commission, they held their public hearing, and we received no public comment. And they voted six oh to recommend approval of version two of the proposed amendment. This was our little staff review, saw this on the twenty-first as well. This is based on calendar year, I don't think in fiscal year, unfortunately. But these are basically just the costs that have gone toward us sending out newspaper noticing. It usually ends up being about a hundred dollars every text amendment and general plan amendment. And then that was my call out before, just that some are, some of our requirements aren't consistent with state code. So we have two motions of approval, one's the version one, and then the other one's version two, and then this is the motion to deny.
Kelly, I have a question. So the five-hundred-foot radius, where does that come from?
Where does it come from? We have it in a few other places in code. First, for some things in state code, it does require that the municipality establish, like for certain applications, establish a radius. So some cities have it a little different than five-hundred, but that's been ours. And there's a specific county website, like county notification map, that residents can type in their buffer, and it just punches out the addresses for them.
Which is handy, so, you know, as I've been on the council over the years, it seems like we get in more trouble transparency-wise by not notifying more people when there's a rezone or a development, or, you know, these things that we're discussing today. So I'm wondering, since we're going to eliminate one of the ways that we notify people, and it's true that a lot of people don't take newspapers or look at the newspaper online like they do, but I promise you, most people don't follow the state website, and that's one of our options. So the other option we have is the city website. Some people follow that pretty rarely, a lot don't. It just seems to me like I would support a bigger radius of notification on these things. I think we would have less controversy if we went out seven-hundred-and-fifty feet or a thousand feet. And I imagine that does increase our mailing costs and notification costs, but at the same time, it increases our transparency. So I kind of lean to having a bigger radius, it doesn't have to be a thousand, it doesn't have to be seven-fifty, but bigger than five-hundred, because sometimes, depending on where you live, there's not a lot of people, they come in and say, gee, we weren't notified, and blah, 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 this or that. I've just heard that several times, you see where I'm coming from, I, yeah.
For sure. I, I do want to just show you this really quick, it's a little hard to see on the projector, but it's probably easier on the TV screen. This is that website that the county uses. This is where you type in that buffer, so just an example, this is a five-hundred-foot radius from this property right here. Typically, when we hear five-hundred feet, we think, oh, that's only like two or three lots maybe, and people anticipate only having to send out seven envelopes, and then they do this and find out that they have to address twenty to thirty. And so I, I understand that, like, obviously, y'all can increase the radius, but I just wanted to give you an understanding of kind of what five-hundred looks like. Because it's a radius all around.
That's in a subdivision, kind of a denser housing.
Let's, we have one that's coming up, that we have a subdivision that is homes, homes. Let's assume that lot, that's a little bit more of a rural area, it's on a main road. If we did that one, what, how would the five-hundred feet pertain to that one?
And I would like to see what seven-hundred-and-fifty feet looks like and what a thousand feet looks like.
So that's the five-hundred?
So this is five-hundred.
Okay.
We can do seven-fifty real quick. All right, come on. A little bigger. Do a thousand. And like with this one, you obviously have way bigger properties on this edge, so it doesn't seem to change it too much, but it did, the thousand included these lots up here.
Kelly, are the postage costs borne by the city or the applicant?
It's, it's by the applicant, they have to provide the envelopes stamped.
I just wanted to add a comment, I think the reason five-hundred was picked is there is a reference for a notice for a signed ordinance change in state law that's five-hundred feet. So we probably just looked at that, you know, way back in the day and just said, well, state law says five-hundred for this thing, so we'll just adopt it. There's nothing particularly magical about it.
Can I ask a question? Kelly, to increase transparency without any incremental cost, what would you, what is your opinion of keeping the five-hundred rule, but at the same time have an opt-in email list for, for residents? And they can indicate, do you want to be notified if you are outside of this five-hundred-foot radius and you are within a thousand feet or two thousand feet? Would you like to receive an email notification?
You're saying email rather than receiving a letter, is that what you're saying?
Well, correct, because if we're, if the statute indicates five-hundred feet, and I understand what, what Dr. Smith is saying, in that we want to increase transparency as opposed to keeping it static or decreasing it, then that might be a way to do it with no incremental increasing cost.
I, I mean, I guess technically with Everbridge, when we have public hearing notices, that's where they voluntarily will sign up for city notifications. And so technically, it would send to anyone in the city for public hearing notices, which we would still have to hold public hearings for general plan amendments, rezones, text amendments.
So Tim, if you go on and you sign up what's called the Everbridge thing, I get an email about every city council meeting, I get it if there's any, anything, it's a public hearing, I get an email that's notifying me there's something going on in the city or the agenda, and I've opted in to get all that. I don't know if you could do it by, hey, this address opt-in, but the Everbridge is something that goes out anytime we have a public hearing or things to notify.
Yeah, I was familiar with that, I was just wondering if you would, if they're automatically included with these types of notifications?
I don't think email-wise they are.
Would that be possible to add, and would that increase cost?
I don't, you'd have to have the person.
Well, you'd have to come up with some sort of programming to be able to combine the two, essentially. We'd have to take these radiuses and then subtract out whatever emails we have that already signed up with the item.
This, this goes off the property text.
No, I meant everyone. I mean, that, that's complete transparency, it just goes out there.
As in, rather than doing these letter noticing, it's just.
No, do, do the letters, because that seems like it's required, but then just send out a blanket email to all residents that have opted in. That way you've got complete citywide transparency, transparency with no incremental cost.
Yeah, that's what we do through Everbridge, so when we have public hearing notices, Stephanie.
In this case, you do, already?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Right, Stephanie, you send the public.
Stephanie, um, so we do them for city council meetings in general, but not for every single public hearing. And we can change that. There's also a, you have to balance, right? How many, how many notices do you want to send out? Are people going to stop, start opting out? We do, Everbridge does give us the ability to draw, draw areas on maps and only send to certain areas, so that's something we could look at doing. Honestly, we have not used that feature.
So Everbridge does have it based off of addressing, though it's your email, we've put in.
We could say only send to the people within, you know, this shape that we draw.
Yeah, because that's how I got the email about the alert about Walmart the one time, because they drew a. I don't see what, I, I mean, I agree with Scott, I don't see what the harm would be in increasing the radius a little bit, because it is something that we hear about regularly.
I agree as well.
Yeah.
So, so we need to have a public hearing, but what I'm hearing is you'd like to increase, are you thinking seven-fifty or a thousand?
You know, I'm willing to compromise on it, I'm just thinking we need to be sure we're more transparent because, and I appreciate Councilman Ball's concerns, and I like the idea of emails and that, but even if you went out to a thousand feet here, you might, you're still sending mail to less than forty homes. That's what, about twenty dollars? And I think, you know, twenty, twenty-five dollars for notification to people is kind of a little drop in the bucket for what you're paying for impact fees and taxes and all this other stuff. So I, I just think, you know, we just had a lot of people over the years come in and say, I didn't know about this till the last minute, you should have notified me. I just would like to increase the radius at least to seven-fifty.
I'm fine with seven-fifty.
Okay, let's go ahead, let's open this up for public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that would like to chime in on this item of the news, you know, newspaper notification, or about what maybe the notification to residents. So at this time, we'll now open this up to public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to come up and address the council on this item? Please go ahead and come on up, Catherine. Oh, yeah, Catherine, go ahead, come on up here.
It's a public hearing.
That's a public hearing. Oh, he's recording, he's back here, he's monitoring what's going on.
Who's what?
He, he's back there monitoring, it, it's recording.
Oh, okay. I'm glad that you let me speak, because recently, I had this exact same situation about Mrs. Johnson's house and property, and, and I said, I don't know what I'm doing here. I haven't found one other person that got a letter. And I, I guess I'm five-hundred feet away from her place. And then later on, after I had made everybody upset at me, I, I asked a few people, like the homeowners directly behind her property, and I said, did you get a letter? And they said, oh, yeah, well, we knew the situation. And that was the answer I got from most of my neighbors. They all got letters, but they threw them away. So I don't think it's going to help, but you could, I, I'm often wrong, Scott knows that. But anyway, for sure, I just wanted to say I don't think you'll get, unless you do every ma, uh, smoke screens or smoke fires or whatever. People, I have been experienced people who were talking in a line at a grocery store, and other people heard, oh, is that going on tonight? I mean, how can you cover it all? And if you send, I, I know when we used to send out the newsletter from the city, people would come to meetings and be so mad. And I said, did you read the newsletter? What newsletter? So I, I, I really don't, I think you're doing a good job. I would have appreciated a, an email, I mean, an airplane or something shot to me, so I don't know when to come, but, and I do appreciate the letter. I don't know, maybe am I still on your list of involved citizens?
You were.
She still is.
I was, that's a lot.
Still is.
I know where to find you, Scott. Anyway, that's just my opinion.
So, so Catherine.
As I talked to people, I found that they'd all gotten letters. I thought I was the only one that got one.
You've served on the council two times.
Right.
Five-hundred feet, seven-fifty, a thousand, what would be your recommendation to the council?
Three-hundred-and-thirty feet.
Okay.
Really, because that takes in the people directly around, and if they want to come, they'll come, and if they don't, they won't. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Is there anyone else that'd like to come up and address the council? This is open, this is the public hearing. So, please state your name one more time.
Aaron Davenport. And as I mentioned, I'm general counsel for homes, homes. I would just mention, even though this is not my item, and maybe, I don't think I'll ruffle any feathers by making a comment, but I, I serve on the Utah Housing Gap Coalition, where we try to come up with ways in which to make housing more affordable for people of lesser income. And of course, the events of the last two years have not helped at all as far as the increases in lands and construction costs. But one of the things, one of the statistics that is out there is fees by, charged by municipalities and cities and counties on average increase the cost of a home for an entry-level home twenty-three thousand dollars. I'm not talking about your water impact fee or things like that. So that, I understand the need for transparency, and I applaud that. And I like the fact that people can voluntarily use the, your website and your systems, and I would encourage transparency by broadening those systems to the extent you can. But anytime you start increasing costs to developers or builders, it is passed through, make no mistake. All builders will pass that through on the purchase price. So what you're really doing is marketing out the low-income people, and they will just turn to renting and things like that, so just keep that in mind. I, I get and would, would agree that this, for example, for us, and for this lot, it wouldn't have, if you're increasing it by another twenty bucks, another fifty bucks. wouldn't, if you're increasing it by another 20 bucks, another 50 bucks, but those 20 and 50 bucks over time add up, and probably it's going to be a lot more than that, because what you're looking at on my lot, those were all acre lots or bigger lots, but if you got into a very dense neighborhood, including apartments or attached homes and stuff, then you're talking, keep in mind, when you go out, it's an exponential function when you increase the radius. So if you double the radius, it's not just doubling the amount of mailouts and the amount of postage, you're probably quadrupling it, and so really, if you were in a high-density area, you'd be going from charging with, I don't know if they just pay postage or envelopes or something, and I don't want, what's that?
That the, the person who's doing the application pays it.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, I don't know if that includes postage and, and the envelopes and everything else, I don't even know what we paid.
You, you just provided stamped envelopes, you gave us the stamps.
Stamps and envelopes, okay, but my point is, is simply, if you had a high-density location, you'd pre, you could be into the hundreds and, hundreds of thou, hundreds of dollars, that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come up and address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing, I assume there's no one online, Kelly, are you on, there's no one online? Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing, we bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
You know, I appreciate the comments here, but, you know, this is Highland, we don't have a lot of high density, and, and I just have heard so many people over the years complain that they didn't feel like they were notified, so I think it makes sense to increase the radius to 750 feet. Again, I don't think we're talking about big costs to mail that, because, you know, unlike the gentleman said, we really don't have a lot of high density here, so that, you know, I think at the most we might be charging 25 bucks or something, and, and true, but at the same time, I understand, you know, some of the current concerns there, but, you know, when developers come in and, and develop in our city and different things, they also impose costs on the citizens that are here that we have to absorb and, and kind of deal with, so I don't know, I think another $20 isn't a big burden on the developers or the people who buy it. So I'd like to make a motion, if I could. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve version two of the proposed amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission to several sections of the Development Code to remove newspaper noticing requirements for certain public hearings, as well as increase the radius from 500 to 750 feet for notification and transparency.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Scott, second by Brittany. Any other discussion? If there's not, we're ready for a vote. So this is to move, that go to 750-foot radius?
Kelly, something appears to have gone wrong with the voting, I don't know what happened. They're not even seeing it on their screen, so Mayor, we probably want, no, it's not advancing for them.
Hey, we will do a roll call vote, we'll start with Sarah Peterson.
Yes.
Brittany Bills.
Yes.
Scott Smith.
Yes.
Kim Riddella.
Yes.
Tim Ball.
Yes.
That passes five to zero. We'll now move on to item number six, which is an action item, which is an impact fee agreement with Cains and Willie, I believe we have Rob, that you are the one that could do the presentation.
I am, thank you Mayor and City Council. This is, fantastic, this is a request from both the owner of the lot and the future owners of the lot who are building a house in the Bull River subdivision, it's a lot that contains a couple of acres of property, when they applied for a building permit, we assessed our impact fees as normal, including our pressurized irrigation system impact fee, and that charge came out to a little over 33,000. Here is kind of the area we're looking at, see the lot highlighted in red there, and then on the right is showing it, it's a very already naturally vegetated area, as we like to say, and the question came up essentially, by their CCNRs for Bull River, they are required to keep a lot of their landscaping naturally vegetated, meaning they're not adding sprinklers, they have to have a landscaping plan approved by the HOA, so they said, well, your PI impact fee is charged for impacts to your irrigation system, meaning how much you're watering, so they asked for that to be adjusted. So under both state law and Highland City ordinance, there is a requirement that cities have a mechanism to adjust the standard impact fee at the time it's charged, to respond to unusual circumstances, specific cases, data presented by the developer, so, and under city ordinances, this comes to the council for you to review and approve. So, like I said, the HOA and CCNRs require as much of the natural landscape as possible to be preserved, large areas of lawns are discouraged, owners have to submit a landscaping plan to the HOA, this is the HOA plan, or not, sorry, the landscaping plan, there is a bit of sod and landscaping going in, but for a two-acre lot, only a few thousand square feet, rather than, you know, tens of thousands of square feet of land is being irrigated and improved. So, so it to those state law provisions and Highland City code, we came up with the impact fee agreement that would set what their impact would actually be. They have dedicated a certain amount of water shares for a 14,520-square-foot irrigated area, and so we would calculate impact fees on that, the 2021 impact fee when they applied, it was in place at the time they applied, is 43 cents per square foot, so calculating that out, their new impact fee would be $6,243.60. So that would be agreed to, that they would only pay that in this agreement, there's also provisions in there, basically say they have to show that the HOA has approved this landscaping plan, and that if they or anyone else changes the landscaping, meaning they add more sprinklers, they draw more water than they said before, we would require both additional water to be dedicated, and that additional impact fees be paid, and those would be set at the time of, whenever that's charged, so it wouldn't be, this year's impact fee would be, you know, if 10 years someone expands that, we'd say, all right, now you have a greater impact, you have to pay the greater impact fee, and that agreement would be recorded against their property. I believe they're also here, there, so if you have any questions, I believe that's Brian, so Brian Cain, so feel free to ask him any questions you would like, or me, I have a couple of motions, but what questions do you have?
Rob, how would we track that and enforce that?
The same way we track it with other places, if we notice that there's other encroachments, it's similar to how we measure encroachments in other open space areas, when we notice that trees have been cut down and people have been expanding, we send them a notice, we actually are dealing with this with a separate property owner in a different area who has expanded their sprinkler system into their back kind of pasture land without permission, we've been trying to work through that with them, so this is something we do try to follow.
How were, were we made aware of that particular instance?
I believe, yeah, I think we've just had, we noticed that they, their usage far exceeded what they were allocated, there was a discrepancy.
How did we notice, was there some, some sort of contingency in the software, where you can indicate if usage is up by more than 20%, then send an email or a text to rob@enforcementdog.com?
I mean, it would be largely in, once we have meters going in, that would be helpful to know, because we would be able to track that, until then, it would be, you know, if we become aware of it, or if we, you know, someone reports it to us, one of the advantages having the system is the HOA requires this, and ideally, the HOA would also notify us if they're going beyond as well.
I remember, my concern is similar, when we have an encroachment in the city, we know a property line, we know, we can look on county maps, we won't be able to look on a county map and say, hey, this is what their landscaping is supposed to be, it's something that we have to, some council in the future, 10 years, has to go, oh, I think something was happening, or they pull up some type of thing that was recorded, I mean, it's like what Tim was saying, it's kind of hard, because it's, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind a little bit, I do agree, and HOA, if they stay involved, they, they would probably be looking to help with saying, hey, they're watering more, now, I assume that we're going to require a meter on this, this is a new build, so this will have a meter being installed at the time of building, but that's, one of my concerns is just, how do we enforce if there's changes?
You know, I kind of share the same concerns, and I'm going to ask Mr. Cain to come up here, but it, it seems to me, and I want to be very supportive, because, you know, that's a big impact fee, and if it's going to be natural landscape, it makes sense, my concern is this, if you're going to save $26,000 by coming to the council, we make an exception on your impact fee, which I support by and large, it seems like it'd be nice to have a better landscape plan that I can look at, because this looks like it was kind of hand-drawn, and that's okay, but it seems like you're going to save $25,000, maybe spend 500 to give us a better landscaping plan, I, I don't want to be insulting at all, but there's a place, and I'll let you talk here, I'm sorry, but one of my concerns is it seems the house itself projects out into the natural landscaping, and it's kind of rare, I find, for people not to put some landscaping around the house, so I was confused when I looked at this, so go ahead and tell us about it, and what you're thinking, and.
Thank you, Ed. One of the things that attracted us to Bull River is that it's heavily vegetated naturally, and the HOA, as, as Mr. Patterson said, the HOA is very restrictive, which is one of the reasons I would like to live there, because I don't want a lot of landscaping, but I recognize your, your concerns, that plan was never meant to be viewed by any city council, and I apologize for that, that was, that's, I've, I've spoken to three landscapers, and all of them indicated that to put together a landscaping plan now with the condition of the land would be foolish, and we have to have the, some of the structure, at least partially built, to see the lay of the land. I, we'll, we'll be putting together a professional landscaping plan and submitting it to the HOA for their approval, and my plan is to have minimal landscaping, and I, I recognize your concerns, I do see the challenge of that, but, well, I can guarantee you that.
Is this old Ralph Reynolds lot, that used to be owned by Ralph Reynolds? It's never been built on down in Bull River?
It has never been, it's the last.
Lot there, this is the old Ralph Reynolds lot?
It's, the back portion of the, of the lot, it has a stream on it, and then there's quite a bit of the land is on the other side of the stream, which I've never actually stood on, and I may never stand on, I don't know, but, so I, I don't, I, I can certainly provide a better, and I will provide a better landscaping plan, a more accurate, professionally-done landscaping plan to the city, but as I said, they didn't want to put one together until they, they have a, a better idea as to the slope of the land around the house, does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I appreciate it, I guess where we kind of struggle a little bit is on our agenda today, you know, the people, I, I love the people in Highland, I've lived here over 33 years, but we constantly have issues with people who kind of push the limits, so, I mean, we have this new encroachment policy, we've got like 25 homes that have encroached on city property, and so we're kind of dealing with that, you know, our first vote today had to do with someone that kind of pushed the limits on accessory buildings, it seems like there's a tendency to kind of, you know, kind of, so we're a little apprehensive, I think, so I, I think we're just a little nervous that if we give you a big deduction, which I appreciate, that you would want, and I understand where you're coming from, that, you know, there might be a tendency to kind of go beyond that, do you see what I mean? So we're just a little apprehensive, because our, from experience.
Well, and I, I can appreciate that, I, I will say that the agreement that we, we signed indicated 14,000 square feet of landscaping, and our plan currently is only to do about 8,000, but I, I recognize.
Now, you're, you're paying for 14,000 though?
Right, correct.
Okay, so you are giving yourself some leeway beyond this, this plan that we're seeing in front of us.
Right, you know, if we look at Bull River, Bull River's a very pretty area, you know, I remember one of the very first times, you know, I, I'm recognized, the HOA says, hey, you need to keep it nat, natural, and I go, that means it, it is sagebrush, and, and I went in some of the yards, and it was actually beautiful the way they kind of landscaped, but I've also been in several of the yards there at Bull River, that naturally they have not just kept all their, their sagebrush, they have landscape, they've went, I mean, and I know these are two-acre lots, there's some that I could go and go, they have a beautiful, full landscaped yard, and there's some that have kept very native vegetation, and so Rob, I mean, I guess to me, I'm just going, how do we make sure this doesn't come into a full-blown yard versus keeping it native, I understand recording, but what's, my still concern is, other than us having to pull up the title and see that they were supposed to be this way, and remembering it, what, what's our signal to know that this is not staying in, in with the agreement? Because that, because there has been several yards, you know, you might not be the owner in 10 years, that owner changes the landscaping, we're not going to be here, you know, and so that, and the memory changes and things that way, that's one of my concerns.
There's, I don't have a, a great answer for that, I mean, impact fees are assessed at the time of building permit, because there's a very clear, they can't change anything until they pay all those fees and get a building permit, so it's very easy for us to enforce it then, this does require us to adjust it and us to stay on top of it.
Have we ever adjusted impact fees for something like this?
We have adjusted fees, not, not like this, we do it, you know, for development, sometimes it'll be multifamily or things where it's, things change, where we just calculate a little bit differently, but.
Other homes in Bull River?
No.
Well, let me ask you, even other homes in other Highland, I mean, if I decide, oh, I don't want to, at first, I'm not going to put my backyard, it's just my front yard, so I, my impact, I only want the front, is this setting this, I mean, that's my other concern, what, what are we setting ourselves up for, that someone could keep coming in, and now they go and put in their backyard, and, and now, now that's the, and I'm not, I recognize there's unique properties in Bull River, I recognize that you have probably some property on the other side of the river, by the way, that, that stream will turn into a river in early spring, I mean, it's, it, it can get roaring down there, you know, so you, you want to be careful not getting your home too close, you know, on some of that, you have the homes on the one side, I think if you went and talked to them, they probably could help you understand about the flow of that river, as, as well as several other, but that's just my concern is, you know, why do we just set up, if we do it here, now you've done that exception, why don't we signal to other residents to come in and make the same request?
So, a, a two-part response to that, one is, in some regard, under state law, we're supposed to make adjustments if they give us data showing they're not going to have as much of an impact as we originally assumed. The second part of that is, this is a, there is a, there are CCNRs recorded, conditions, covenants, restrictions, I haven't actually said that out in a long time, that are already against the property, it would be, I would feel it'd be a very different case for someone who just came in, who doesn't have like a conservation easement or something restricting how they can use their property, say, I'm just going to choose to not use this, or say, we have no way of doing that, this is a little bit different, because you do have an HOA that requires some kind of plan, and it to be approved, and it to be more of the natural side, so there's something kind of already operating to restrict how the property should be used.
Could we put in the plan that it's subject to putting the rest in the conservation easement of non-buildable for landscaping, or is that taking property rights on, or I don't want to go and take our, our property rights, but, you know, if we're trying to stop to make sure we don't have that impact, is there, we could say you have to put that in a conservation easement to make sure it can't be built on or landscaped?
Can I make a comment? I think that, as I'm looking at this, there are a lot of things, I appreciate the concerns for sure, we just can't read the tea leaves for the future, and I think at some point we have to say we're going to have faith in our residents, even though clearly we've been burned, and we're having to deal with that right now, but I don't think you can, you can punish other residents for some of the decision, poor decisions some residents have made, and it makes sense, the impact is lower, he's left himself some room, you know, he hasn't done the very minimum, so he has room to expand a little bit, and that's still within the impact fees that he's paying or requesting, so in my mind, it makes sense to approve the recommended impact fees at the lower level, even though we can't see what's going to happen in 10 years. In 10 years, it might be a problem.
We, we know that we have maybe a good player here in front of us, but we know that good players move, meaning that.
Exactly.
That they move, and so we have different individuals that might not be aware of things or understand it, that's where we have a lot of our encroachment, a lot of people are now, they've moved in there and didn't realize that either the past owner, or they didn't realize, you know.
Right.
It's, it's that time over time that, that it happens, that's my only concern.
Yeah, it is a concern, I just don't know that we can base a decision today on what might or might not happen in 10 years.
If I could add one thing, that if you look at the lay of the, of the lot itself, the vast majority of the lot is, is unlandscapable, in, in, in how, to the, to the south of where we're building is the only buildable area of that lot, the majority of the lot, if you look, well.
It's hard to say that.
Yeah, the house is being built at the top tip, if you will, and the majority of the land, the, the slope of the land, sorry, the slope of the land really makes it almost un, it would be, it would require ma- It would be, it would require major modifications to even develop the land just for like lawn.
Or a pretty waterfall with a rock feature. I'm just, you know, that's what I would look for, you had kind of a pretty area or a nice little fire pit area, I'm just, I'm not trying to be a... The one thing is, is we talk about in HOA, the homeowners association in Bull River is one of the more active ones that do enforce, just so you're aware, I mean, they, they seem to...
And the president lives across the street.
Yeah, so I mean, they, they, so Brad Hanson, I think, lives across the street, doesn't he?
Jerry...
Jerry Abbott, it's on the planning commission.
Jerry Abbott.
Mayor, if I may also add a comment, even if we had an easement, we have conservation easements elsewhere in the city that people have encroached upon that we have not. And this already basically says, in the agreement, it says, you cannot change how you use this property, period, without coming to the city. So all of that natural landscaping, if you're going to change how you're impacting it, it always says to come, it basically acts as an easement recorded against the property anyway.
Counsel, any other information that you need at all, or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, if I can see it. I move that the city council approve the impact fee agreement for lot ten B of the Bull River subdivision.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Sarah, second by Kim. Any other discussion, or are you ready for a vote? No discussion, let's go ahead and go to the vote. Okay, if it's not working, we're now going to go to a vote, and we'll start over here with you, Tim.
Can I make one comment? I'm sorry to interrupt, I was a little slow thinking here. But I feel more comfortable voting for this now that I realize that they actually applied for fourteen thousand and really only have landscape plans for eight thousand. So there is kind of some buffer there. I, and I appreciate all the work that's been done by our attorney on this, so I appreciate it.
Okay, Tim Ball?
Yes.
Kim Riddella?
Yes.
Scott Smith?
Yes.
Brittany Bills?
Yes.
And Sarah Pearson?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. We will now move on to item number seven, which is an agreement for the two thousand twenty-two Debris Basin Project Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Andy, you have that.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. Can we go to the next slide? Just a reminder of where we've been on the Debris Basin. About two months ago, this came before the council, and the council decided to table this in order to get a little more information about the Debris Basin. I think for some member of the council, there wasn't a lot of knowledge on the history of how we got the Debris Basin, why we even had the Debris Basin, maybe. And so Nathan then sent an email to the council the next day about a little bit of the history of the basin, just to give you a quick reminder on that. The Debris Basin came about in two thousand eight. The three cities decided to enter into a contract with Utah County to purchase the basin. The three cities being American Fork, Cedar Hills, and Highland. And in two thousand thirteen, the council approved a Debris Basin Administrative Board that would kind of guide the affairs of the basin, make the decisions, you know, on the ongoing operations. And that Debris Basin Administrative Board consists of the three public works directors of the three cities. Those public works directors are in turn supposed to report to their councils, and it seems like that probably hadn't been happening, although we will make sure that happens, you know, going forward, try to give you an annual update on what we're looking at there. And then also, you know, this reconstruction had been considered for a number of years leading up to this. And so in the budget planning for this year that we are now in, FY two thousand twenty-three, we did consider that, that the needed funds for this, and this was included in the budget that was adopted also in the storm drain rate utility study. So the monies are there in the budget for this. That being the case, I think it would be helpful, and we've asked, I've asked Ernie John to come this evening, because Ernie is the appointed operations director for the basin by the administrative board. For those of you who don't know, and Ernie can give himself more of an introduction. Ernie kind of watches all things water at the mouth of the canyon and up the canyon. And so Ernie also operates the Debris Basin on a day-to-day basis. And so ask Ernie to come and give the council a little bit of background on what he sees with the basin. And then after that, Jeff's going to talk a little bit about what it's like to operate the basin and some of these events.
So, Ernie's not only, you're not, for American Fork, he's also over Silver Lake, Temple Fork, and the river then coming down in for our water, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, thanks, thanks.
He's our water guru.
And so I operate the reservoirs in American Fork Canyon. That's my watershed, that's my office about a hundred and fifty days a year. It's a little bit nicer than here, but that's okay. And also, the Debris Basin Committee, about a decade ago, when I started doing this full-time, we met and they asked me to take over the day-to-day operations if it's not high water. Because when it's high water, Jeff's going to talk about that, it's all hands on deck. But just normal day-to-day operations, because the river flows through there. And Councilman Smith, I think we've talked about this before. One of the things that I do is I operate it during the winter time. I hold it partially full for groundwater recharge, so that helps our wells specifically, that well right there close to the mouth of the canyon. So I've been working for over a decade on groundwater recharge also. I don't know if you noticed that the county commission authorized Central Utah Water Conservancy District ten million dollars to work on groundwater recharge. So we've been working on it for a long time to do more than just this. But if it's water and it runs through Highland, I probably have my fingers in it one way or another. So I think, Councilman Ball, do you live over, above Dry Creek? Is that, you're over there by any chance, by the trail? Is that your property, is that where you live, over in that area?
Yes.
Did you do, we did a property swap with you a few years ago, wasn't, or, no, that wasn't it then? Okay, I also, I sit on several boards for water here in North Utah County. Century, and so, like I said, if it's wet, it's probably me.
Let me ask a couple of questions. Actually, I live downriver, so it makes, you know, sense personally to have the flow in this organized and reconstructed. My only apprehension was, is it seems like it makes sense to do it now in the dry years, of course, but we're also doing it in one of the most expensive times, inflationary times. And we're asked to come forth with two hundred and forty thousand dollars now. In the agreement, if you have cost overruns, we all split that up by a third. And I'm just a little apprehensive about, you know, the bidding process and everything at this particular time because of the inflated costs and supply chain issues. So that's my only hesitancy. My second comment or question is, is there is a lot of char, or talk about setting up a secondary or another recharge area near the mouth of the canyon. And I guess the question I have, this is the first that I've ever heard, and I've been on the council often on for ten years, that this area is used to recharge the aquifer. That's never been discussed that I've heard. And I guess the second question I have related to that is, if this is used as a recharge area, why wouldn't we expand this and use this as the main recharge area? Rather than build another one in another location close by? Because you're going to spend a lot, you're going to spend, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars working on this. Why not take some of that ten million dollars that the county just approved or the CUP and make this the recharge area and expand it out? Is it just not the right location, or?
Let me try and answer those maybe in order, and if you have, feel free to interrupt. So the money that was allocated is specifically for a different location.
Yes.
And it can't, we're not going to be able to cross it over. This, we're going to need all of the groundwater recharge areas if we're going to continue to live in North Utah County. The short answer is, we can kick the can down the road. And I had a previous mayor of a city south here about ten years ago ask me to put my arms around groundwater recharge, and it was kind of languishing. And in fact, Andy, at that time, was involved and kicked me too, and said, Ernie, I need you to do this. So we revived a committee that hadn't been operational here in North Utah County, the North Utah County Aquifer Council, and we have been working on groundwater recharge. But at that time, there was a study done by Hanson Alus that was, that was funded by the Aquifer Council, and we identified all the areas that we'll need, and we will need both areas, Councilman Smith, not just the debris basin, we'll need all the areas that we can have here in North Utah County if we're going to continue to have the groundwater that we have today for people forty years down the road. Because at one point in time, we had over a hundred flowing wells in American Fork, and we don't have hardly any, like a handful now. So groundwater's been dropping over the years. So we need everything.
And I understand that, but I guess my question is, is why, when you're doing all this work on this area, why wouldn't you expand this debris basin to be a bigger recharge area?
Could I add just a little bit, if that's okay?
Is it impossible, because we're talking about kind of across the...
So, what, what you got, you've got two things with that, Councilman Smith. So with groundwater recharge, number one, there's the element of just getting in the water, the water in the ground, and, you know, and doing the benefit to your wells, right? So this debris basin operates kind of as a de facto recharge just during the periods when we're, you know, when we're storing water in it daily. The second element to an aquifer stores and recovery element is you got to get credit for that water, right? And so this facility is not and will never be set up to really measure that amount of water that we're putting in, putting out. The other locations that we're looking at are locations where we can measure and quantify that water. The other element that you've got is, what you want to do during that aquifer storage time period is you want to take that water, and for lack of a better word, you want to put it in the big dish and let it seep, seep in slowly. The way we have to operate the debris basin is, we let out as much water as we can during the day, so that when the surge comes at night, because the surge that hits the mouth of the canyon hits during the middle of the night, because it happens during the day when all the sun shines up in the canyon, and it takes about twelve hours to get down the canyon. So we aren't able to, while, while we're certainly influencing the groundwater, we're not able to put all the water in the, in the dish or the pond and just hold it and let it seep into the ground. We're kind of just, we have to kind of operate like our PI basins do, where we, we, the basin ebbs and flows, so we can't just hang on to that water like we need to with aquifer storage and recovery. So the two facilities need to operate differently, and unfortunately, they also need to operate at the same time. Because at the same time that we have lots of water going down the river, is the same time we're going to have the extra water to put in the ground, if that makes sense. And so it does operate as kind of a de facto recharge, but it's going to be really tough to quantify it here. So, so in looking at it, as, you know, I also sit on the aquer council too, and those two, while they'll be complementary to each other, are probably always going to serve a little bit different function.
Okay, that's helpful. Can I ask you a question, Andy?
Yeah.
So I believe you were the public works director in American Fork when the American Fork irrigation pond was put in the debris basin?
City engineer, yeah.
City engineer, yes. So I've always been curious why it was put in the debris basin. I guess it was the best location, but do you ever run a risk when the debris basin is full of it overflowing into that irrigation pond?
Well, here was the theory at the time, and to some extent, we'll say that availability of land always comes into your, into play, right? So American Fork needed a reservoir that was by the mouth of the canyon. So your choices were, we could either acquire the land from Highland, the we being American Fork at that time, right? We could acquire the land from Highland, and Highland didn't know what they were doing with all their property at that time, and we probably still don't on some of it. We could try to acquire somebody gravel pit, which wasn't for sale at the time. Or we could try and get some land from the feds, you know, which have, you know, the US government has some land there, they have set aside for the future visitor center. Or try to figure out something that was, you know, to work with the county in the debris basin. So to some extent, it was a low-hanging fruit. Okay, the county's willing to work with us, we can make it work, right? But that being said, the basic theory was that the debris basin was going to need to operate when there was peak flow, and during the peak flow, if the, if American Fork basin happened to get inundated with water, it wouldn't do much harm, because we were trying to fill this water anyway, so.
But if you'd have to clean it?
Yeah, we'd have to clean out the pond.
I've just always been curious about that.
You'd run the risk of the fence getting crushed and a few things. And so American Fork decided, well, given that it was the land that we could acquire, that that made it the best choice, if that makes sense.
Right.
Would it have been nicer to have a basin that was separate? Absolutely, there just, there was limited options.
Okay, I've just always been curious, sorry.
Yeah, and it's a reasonable question, and it's actually something that was debated pretty seriously amongst...
So can I ask, just in this kind of curious question? So this is the catch, the debris coming out of all the canyon. So we're going to have a lot of silt and...
Yeah, so it has to, it has, as part of the operations, it has to be cleaned on a, on a, depends on how often it has to be cleaned, just how many big water years we have. Because the more, the higher water years we have, the more silt settles out there.
But this is past, if you want to look at the elevation, we have an irrigation pond. How do we keep our water clean in our irrigation pond versus all the debris? I mean, how do we, how's the debris get separated to know where it goes?
Well, that's Ernie's specialty, and he's also probably going to share a little bit with you on, you know, what's to come with the weir at the mouth of the canyon too, it's a separate issue. But, but keeping the weir free of debris, and the stream free of debris is when, when we are in high water, as Ernie indicated, is an all-hands-on-deck type of event, because it's a significant effort to have. Well, let Ernie answer that more, because both he and Jeff have been right there in the trenches, so to speak, during those events.
So, yeah, thank you, Andy. And so, Councilman Smith, if I can, if I go through a couple of these slides, I think I can answer your questions kind of in order. So if you look at the slide we've got now, this is the existing American Fork River, and this is just, these two slides are, these three pictures, on this slide is one spot about a mile up the river. What you can't tell is exactly how tall that is. From top to bottom, it's about sixteen feet tall. Could we go to the next picture, please? Okay, these pictures are up by Little Mill Campground, the two on my right, on the right side, and then the one on the left side by itself is just below Temple Fork. So a little bit of history, about fifteen years ago, when we decommissioned the power plant up the canyon, one of the things that I don't think anybody realized long-term is, Utah, Rocky Mountain, sorry, Utah Power and Light to me. Rocky Mountain Power would spend about three weeks every couple of years in there with a boom truck and three or four crews, and they would clean from Temple Fork all the way down to the old diversion dam up through there. And so there's a lot of debris that they would clean out to make their power plant operational, and that's one of the things they took into consideration, is how much money they were spending. So they decided to decommission the power plant. So there was that section that they used to clean, that now we don't get cleaned, and then the section below again. So on low water years, we, this stuff naturally builds up. And unfortunately, when we get a real high water year, we get it down the canyon all at once. I think most of you know, four years ago, we had a pretty good water year, and I lived up to the mouth of the canyon for nine weeks at that structure that Andy was talking about, the weir, because it was put in a hundred and two years ago, and it's still a hundred and two years old, so it's all manual operation. So the way we had it set up is, I worked from six PM at night till seven AM the following morning. So I'm an electrical engineer, so I set my own gauges up so I could get a little bit of sleep, but I was up every hour checking that to make sure we didn't flood our cities. And then during the day, the cities would take turns and man that, and it was manned twenty-four hours a day for nine weeks. So as part of that process, we're in the process of getting some funding from the federal government to rebuild that structure for the irrigation companies at the mouth of the canyon. We've been saving our money, we've been doing what we can, and if the feds come in with what they've committed, the two biggest shareholders for American Fork Irrigation Company are American Fork City and Highland City. But I think we've got enough saved that we can, with the fed's share, be able to rebuild this. It will be several million dollars. So as part of that, we're designing it to do a better job of passing the debris, and that's really what we have to fight there. But the debris then is stopped in the debris basin, that's what it's for. And we've got years and years of buildup in the canyon that we know were going to come down. And so then to your last question, next slide if you would, Andy. Then to your last question, if we're in a drought and we're in a rough time, this is a graph that we do for one of our board members on American Fork Irrigation, takes data from the USGS station up the canyon. It was put in, we've got good records from nineteen twenty-eight through today, so we've got almost ninety-five years of records. And if you'll... got almost ninety-five years of records. And if you'll look at the right side of the graph, and I want to, I want to tell you, if you look at the years on the bottom of the graph, a couple of them won't make sense, because you'll see a year kind of out of place. That's because there was eleven years that this was inoperable. So what we did is we plugged in snowpack numbers to, to be as close as we could. But that's ninety-five years of data, and if you, who can remember the State Street Rivers, Andy, am I the only old person that's been? Okay.
No.
Well, the year the State Street River happened, if you look on that graph, that was the third highest water year, not the first, not the second. And in fact, the first two, if you look back there, that was, there we go, that one right there was twenty-eleven, our highest water year ever in the canyon. So the difference is, is Mother Nature. When the water comes down is how it comes down. Does it continue to snow and build up, and then rain real hard for a month, and then go to ninety-five degrees? That's what happened in nineteen eighty-three. And when that happened, it washed that structure out at the mouth of the canyon, and in fact, we had to rebuild it, washed part SR ninety-two out, and it had to be rebuilt. In twenty-eleven, we had more water than we had then. What was the difference? The difference was, it was really wet, and we had a really long, cool, dry spring, and so the stuff came down nice and slow and controlled. And even then, we still, we still struggled with that. We manned that structure for about, almost three months with twenty-four-hour-a-day personnel up there, again, to, to man it. And they were manning the structure at the mouth of the canyon and the debris basin, because what happens is, as, as it gets caught there at the mouth of the canyon, we open the gates, and where do we put it? The debris all goes debris basin where it's supposed to. So we've got a lot coming, and that debris basin is the defense to keep Highland, Cedar Hills, and American Fork from flooding. I mean, it's plain and simple. That's what keeps us from getting all the debris on down the river and building up down in Hidden Oaks, or building up anywhere in our cities that there's any type of, of a place that it can catch. Now, I think the last thing I want to touch on, low water years are really nice from a management standpoint. I actually work harder managing the water, but the river is easier to manage, so it's a catch-22. As we have all of these low years, if you've noticed, if you go down on the river, we've got a lot more growth in the river, because the high years flush it out, and the low years provide just enough water to let the trees grow. So we've got a lot of trees that are going to catch things, so that's why that debris basin is so important, is to catch the stuff. We hold it there, and then we don't get flooding in our, in our city.
Just, just to restate one item that Ernie touched on, the new design for the weir, will make it much easier to keep the weir functional during these debris events. You know, so the weir, and I guess our water is going to happen a lot easier there, but it's also going to make it a lot easier or more efficient for that debris to flow over that weir and hit the debris basin. So that emphasizes the fact that the debris basin has to work well. Once we get that weir, now that it doesn't have to work well today, but it's even more important, once that weir's rebuilt, that the debris basin work well, because it's all going to shoot past that a lot easier than it has been. And that's for a lot of good safety reasons, it's the right thing to do, but it places more importance on the debris basin.
It does. So, so the new design won't have gates. We've, we've actually got it designed. The federal government paid for the design work, and we've got, we've got a structure where it'll flow over, and the water will drop in. It'll be controlled, skated, the same thing that your city water is. So it will really be a nice structure, but Andy's right, we've designed it for all those logs to not get caught. They'll just shoot right through, and they'll end up in the debris basin.
I don't know if anyone else has been up there and looked at that, but I was up there some time ago, and I can see what you're talking about. I was really surprised.
Yeah. The debris basin was put in in nineteen eighty-four, it's thirty-eight years old. The gates are thirty-eight years old, the structure's thirty-eight years old. It's a sound structure. Andy's comment about the groundwater recharge, that area is, is, we've expanded about as much as we can there, we can't really expand anymore. And, and he's right, that we have a certain amount that goes there that we don't get credit for. Yeah, the new one is going to be way different than this, the other structure, the other place to do the groundwater recharge. But we, we need them both for that reason.
Yeah, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I appreciate all the information you've given us tonight. I'm certainly in favor of this moving forward.
If I could, just ask Jeff to take just a minute and talk about operations, because one of the things that the, the weir rebuild is intended to do, and that the, this rebuild for the debris basin is intended to do is make it a lot safer for the staff. Can you go to the next slide now, Kelly? And I've never been one who, who's the person in the red hat here. I'll let Jeff speak to this, because he has been, and, as is Ernie. And so it's a little bit of a scary situation right now for those that are fighting the debris. So go ahead, Jeff.
So I was wishing we could find some pictures from two thousand and eleven, some of those big, big water years. We reached out to several people, and this is all we can come up with. It's my excellent photography skills here, but it was just off a cell phone. This, this illustrates two thousand and nineteen, and that, once again, if you look at the flow chart in the canyon, this wasn't even a significantly high year. There, it was, it was a large year, but it wasn't anything to be alarmed of, besides the amount of debris that was coming down the canyon. So it's, it's a little bit hard to see, but there's a previous mayor that's in that picture. He's actually standing on top of the debris flow. Underneath where he's standing is where the catwalk is that you're supposed to be standing on to clean this, this area. But in situations like this, when so much comes in such a little amount of time, we can't keep up with it. And so the way that it's built right now, there's two little access roads that come down to the, that structure, but in order to reach that debris, it's all by hand. It's almost impossible to reach it with equipment. We've, we've used backhoes and different things to reach out as far as we can, but to clean the grate itself, it's, you're out there on it, standing on it on your feet with a pitchfork or a rake, trying to clear that debris. And to do that and get it out of the way to where it needs to be safely is, it's a, it's a process, it's a chore. It's not only a lot of work, but it's, it's very unsafe, the footing that you're standing on. It's just a situation that you hate to put guys out on, especially in the dark, when they're pulling us debris off.
So, so Jeff, the proposals for seven hundred and forty thousand, I think to be split amongst three cities, what does that seven hundred and forty thousand do? Like, what, what's the change?
We'll have, here, here shortly. There's one more picture. I'll get to that question just one, one second.
One sec.
So that, this picture, this was taken last week, and the debris that's on here was this year, just the flow from this year. Obviously, there's no water in there, because it's all being put into the systems, but in one of the most historical low water years that we've experienced, we, we did pick up this much debris. And you can kind of see the catwalk that I was talking about, that a previous mayor was standing on, clear, trying to clear that debris. And it's, it's virtually, I mean, it's pretty difficult to even remove it from there, so I've, I've done it. Everybody that's been up there to clean this debris, you actually step down off of that onto the grate itself, and there're angled bars, and you just kind of wedge your feet in there and do your best to stay vertical and clear that debris. So that's, that's the biggest concern I have, and the reason that we've all looked into redoing this structure to make it safer, easier to clean, and we can clean it with equipment versus putting, putting men out there and putting them into harm's way. The next picture here is the drawing, the concept drawing of what the new structure will look like. Once again, one of the board members of American Fork Irrigation works for an engineering firm, and they've drawn this up. And it's, unless you get it blown up and really see it, but right there, just north of the dark, the really dark square, there's a concrete pad that will be poured there, and that will facilitate equipment to come in on that access road that comes from the north, come down onto that, that pad and, and reach out. And we've done the measurements of the reach of the different equipment that we have access to within the cities, and that equipment's able to get out there and virtually clear most of that debris without having men out on those structures.
So the basic idea of this, and the whole reason we're pushing for it, is because as Jeff indicates, we'll, we'll redirect the flow in the way that, that the flow gathers all the debris right in front of the landing platforms, the tracko, so then the tracko can reach out there and grab it, rather than somebody be kind of balancing themselves precariously and trying to pull over the, the debris. And so it, it keeps our, our staff, you know, away from having to just, you know, kind of reach out. And it is quite scary for them, because when it's, when the debris's heavy, it's a lot of heavy logs and everything, and both at the weir and here at this location, you know, they're reaching out, there, there's not a lot of great tie-off, and it puts them in a, in a great risk for falling in and then having the debris come in on them. And so this, this will allow the, the equipment to do the clearing. And so that's the big thing. And then it also replaces the gates and makes the gates once again operational, because right now, the gates are kind of held together with bailing wire and duct tape that Ernie's placed on them, to maybe bubble gum as well.
Yeah.
To get it through.
Yeah, they're, they're, like I said, almost forty years old, and it shows. When we sized this and when we worked on the design, we designed it so, like Andy said, we looked at the various piece of equipment that the different cities have that, that are involved, and we can take a dump truck down, park it right next, on that pad, right next to a backhoe or tracko, reach out, grab the debris, put it right in the truck and, and take it away, so that you're not risking life and limb. And I don't know if you can remember back, four years ago, in twenty nineteen, one of the agreement, because of the three cities that worked together, is we parked the American Fork backhoe up in your upper city pond lot for the time that we had high water, so that if we needed to move it to either the weir, which at that point, we, that's our only option there, is to clean it with a, with a tracko, is we had it available to use. Unfortunately, here on the debris basin, it doesn't work very well, because you can't reach out, and when you want to clean it, you need to be able to reach down and grab it and pull like this. The way the current structure is, you can't do that. You're at a ninety-degree angle, and you just can't clean it with equipment. It has to be cleaned by hand.
Hey, Andy, I have a question for you. I just want to clarify, American Fork and Cedar Hills have already approved the two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we have the signed agreement in their quarters office right now, with American Fork signatures on it. I'm told by the Public Works Director at Cedar Hills that they have approved it. And so, so, yeah, so we would be the, the last one to approve it.
So I guess I just want to say, we've basically heard that for the safety of our citizens, we need to redo this. For the safety of our public works, we need to do this. We've already allocated it in our budget. And so I am in favor of this, if, if we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make another comment or two. I appreciate your coming here and explaining this. I, I mean, the compelling argument is there to do this. I have no problem with that. I'm actually directly impacted, because I live along the American Fork River. I'm not opposed to that. My questions have to be a little bit budgetary. How did you come up with this two hundred and forty thousand per city? I mean, it's one-third for each city. But where did, how did you come up with these figures? This is kind of an estimate, because we're in an inflationary period, everything's a lot more expensive. My feeling is, is we're not going to be approving two hundred and forty thousand, it's going to probably be three hundred and something, because I bet you're going to have to come back to us. And I, I just wonder if there's some kind of feeling about this, because we've had this in project after project in the city. So my concern is the cost overruns, and do we have enough money in the sewer fund if we have cost overruns?
So to answer your question in twofold. Number one, the initial estimate, the estimate comes from the design engineers, was it HOREX engineers? They provided the engineer's estimate, and then they actually came back and, because of the current economic conditions, revised that estimate, and told us we needed to put in a little bit more, which is where we got the collective seven hundred and twenty thousand, right? It was from HOREX engineers. The other thing we're going to try and do is, as the Rebasin Committee, we talked about this, and we recently did this with our sewer project, is we're going to try and give contractors, you know, about eighteen months to do it, so that they can maybe take a little bit of the risk out of the equation. And then we've also talked about putting in the bid that, you know, kind of a, just for concrete only, because concrete's been really volatile recently, a escalation slash de-escalation clause, where, hey contractor, if the cost of concrete goes up, we'll pay you the extra, but if it goes down, we get the advantage.
Oh, that's great.
You know, that, that's the provisions through which we've talked about bidding it, to give them a little more time, so they're taking a little risk out of the time equation, and also give them an escalation slash de-escalation, so they're not trying to couch themselves for some unforeseen concrete costs. So trying to think through, how can we make sure it comes through as economical as possible, and that those are some of the answers we've come up with.
So can I just follow up on, so this is in the agreement. It says, in event that the lowest responsible bidder's bid is higher than the project budget, as defined herein, American Fork shall not award the bid until and unless each party through the administrative board. So who's our administrative board that's going to prove? So, I mean, if we have some criteria, I'm just saying, because what, you know, here we have it.
You've made some instructions. I'm going to follow instructions there. I would be the representative that would say, wait, I need to go back to the council.
That's, and so if you want to put something in the motion, that, hey, you know, we're here, anything above, we want our administrative board person to come back.
To report, talk to us.
Report, and before the vote, before authorizing a vote, because it says approves additional costs. That's, that's what I think you are concerned about, is that that's, there's a, and I'm not sure how we do that, where, here we approve something to the city council, and we're kind of saying, hey, you can go out and spend. And I understand you give me responsibility, not to say that Andy's not going to be responsible, but I, I do think we need to be where, where that bid also starts to escalate on us. Inflationary, you know, we all can think we're heading into economic downturn, and maybe cement will pull back. I've heard of some of the supplies, but I've also heard there's still a lot of projects in the pipeline, and things haven't went. We are in an unusual economy, we just don't know what we're dealing with.
I, I would foresee that if it was above, that the groups would go back to their respective city councils.
Yeah, that had been the intent behind what was put in the agreement, is, you know, okay, American Fork, because the way this agreement all came about, if you want to go back to it, is, is, you know, that we were preparing for the bid, and it was evident that, you know, that the debris basin, if you will, wasn't an entity that could really bid the work. I mean, the debris basin doesn't really have all the insurances and accounting practices that the individual cities have. And so one city needed to take the lead, and so this agreement was, okay, you know, which city's going to take the lead, and, and what are the rules of that city taking the lead? And the idea was, okay, we're going to allocate a budget, and American Fork, if that initial bid comes in, you know, over that budget, then you can't just go and award the, the bid, you've got to come back to the members, and they've got to say, okay, yeah, we're, we're in for our, our extra amount, if you will. And so I would be the representative that would say, you know, yeah, we're in for it or not, but obviously, I don't have the ability to spend the city's money, so I would need to come back to the council and say, okay, this is how much extra it came in, or are we, you know, are we in or out, so to speak.
So my next question, I know we don't have our financial, we, we are specifying a specific account that's coming out, the storm sewer, system debris basin, annual maintenance. Do we already have sitting in that specific account?
Yeah.
Now, was that earmarked in a, in a plan to make sure there'd be two hundred and forty-five? Or are we taking some from storm sewer to fund it?
Well, in the, in this year's budget, we knew that this item was coming, and so when the budget was prepared, the monies were put. So usually, in the storm sewer, each year, we have kind of a bigger capital project, right? So this was going to be the bigger capital project for FY twenty-three, but rather than putting in the storm sewer capital, you know, the, the monies went into debris basin, because normally, our contribution to the debris basin's five thousand a year. It's a little less than five thousand, but the budget's five thousand. And so that's why the two forty-five. The two forty was for the project, and the five thousand was just kind of for the annual, you know, we all put a little bit in it to have a little bit of money to, to, you know,
Pay the cleaning.
Basic maintenance on the gates, et cetera. So that money's already in the budget.
So Andy, the following, on the very basis, is that a recently updated utility fee also took into account this project. So I don't know if anyone, are we still safe, so are we going to be reimbursing the fund, because we didn't, did we have this, did we already have this debris basin for the last ten years, or did it just recently go in like in September or May, and now we're going to start collecting then?
So, and, and again, it would be helpful, you know, obviously Tyler Sicken could be here, but, but my understanding is that the Storm Drain Fund has sufficient monies right now. So by saying that, what we're saying is that in the utility rate study, for which all the utility rates were, you know, just recently adjusted, this is one of the capital projects that was considered as part of the Storm Rain Utility Rate. But my understanding is that our Storm Drain Enterprise Fund has sufficient monies that we're able to cover this in this fiscal year.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Are we ready? I move that the Highland City Council approves the twenty twenty-two Debris Basin Project Interlocal Cooperation Agreement, and authorize the mayor to sign the document with the following stipulation, that any cost overruns be brought to us as a council for discussion and approval. be brought to us as a council for discussion and approval.
Do we need to say like any cost overruns over like five percent or ten percent? Do we put a number in there?
Our purchasing policy allows for ten percent up to ten thousand dollars, whichever is less. Um, and so, uh, I guess that would be our question for you, Councilmember Scott. Do you mean absolutely any overrun or are you allowing for, uh, ten percent?
I'd like to know about any overrun personally, because a quarter million dollars in our small budget's quite a bit of, so I'd like to hear about it. I mean, that doesn't mean we won't approve it.
So your motion is over that. I'm just saying, that's a motion that has been made. Is there either a second or an alternate motion?
I would like to alter the motion to say that we allow for what the normal overage is to allow for the city, and Andy to make those decisions up to just that point, which is the policy currently.
Okay, so let me just, let's just paraphrase to make sure that Stephanie has it. The motion that Scott made where he added on they had to come back, your amendment is that if it follows the city purchasing policy, that if it's in that, then they can still move forward with authorizing before it comes back to the city council.
Correct.
But that's ten percent, which is two hundred, is twenty-four thousand dollars.
Well, it's ten percent or ten thousand.
Up to ten thousand dollars.
So if it's eleven, does it have to come back or is it ten percent of whatever the?
No, I thought you said it was ten percent of the cost.
Up to ten thousand dollars, whichever is less. So there's a ten thousand dollar cap in our purchasing policy.
So I didn't understand that, because I thought you were talking about twenty-four thousand dollars and I thought we need to discuss that.
Okay, so we have an alternate motion, uh, that has now been made by Sarah. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm.
Can I do that?
It's okay. I'm going to go to Kim since you made the first motion. So we're going to.
Oh, okay.
So we have Sarah with the motion and Kim with the second. We will be voting on the alternate motion, which allows for the ten percent up to ten thousand dollars with the motion that, that moved the city council to approve the twenty twenty-two debris basin project inter-local cooperation agreement and authorize the mayor to sign. Everyone clear on the motion? Okay, are we able to vote electronically? Okay, Kim?
Mayor, let me just say something though. I made the motion, nobody seconded it. So I'll just withdraw my motion and that becomes the motion. Right?
Then we don't have to vote on his motion.
Because nobody seconded my motion.
Yeah, we vote on his, on that, but we're voting, is it the alternate motion that we're going to be voting on?
Well, we just made a new motion because nobody seconded mine.
Basically, we did a friendly amendment to the motion.
We have Sarah's motion. That was seconded by Kim.
Okay, Sarah's motion. We're voting on the motion that Sarah did, that, uh, and so, and that Kim seconded. Okay, so we will start with Brittany.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you.
That passes.
Thank you, Kirk.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now move to item number eight, which is a minor subdivision final plat for HHC Highland. Kelly, I believe we have you down. I don't believe I noticed your name on that thing, so it's you.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Okay. Um, so this is Eric Davenport, the gentleman that you spoke to a couple of times during this meeting. Um, this is his application slash homes, homes. Um, there's the vicinity map kind of showing here's ten four hundred, six thousand's over here. Um, it's technically a one acre parcel that's being proposed to be split into two lots, um, which under our development code allows for a minor subdivision process, um, anything three or less, um, which allows for basically, it expedites the process where instead of going preliminary planning commission council and then final to council, we just go final plat to planning commission and city council once. And so they went to the planning commission with the public hearing and now a city council. Here's the proposed plat. Each lot, they separated it, um, equally. So each lot is one point two five acres. It's in the R one forty subdivision and meets all R one forty requirements as far as frontage and square footage requirements. Access, um, is from the ten, ten four hundred north, sorry, on this north end. Um, we have the twenty-nine foot parkway detail. That's a requirement on ten four hundred by our general plan. Um, currently nine feet of that twenty-nine foot is already dedicated right of way to the city. So this is providing twenty feet to make up for that twenty-nine, um, as a landscape easement. We've done things similar with like Ruby Estates, the subdivisions that are further to the east, also on ten four hundred. Um, and then you have these easements on the south, uh, that are in favor of, um, Jordan Valley and Provo River and the Bureau, Bureau, I can't say that word, Bureau of Reclamation.
Fiscal.
Fiscal.
I like fiscal.
I know.
Sorry, guys.
No, you're okay. Like I said, it's consistent with the R one forty requirements and consistent with the low density, uh, land use regulation in the general plan. And like I said, these are the easements on the property. They do have our standard public utility easements, although these entities do not allow public utility easements in their easements. And so it just goes along the borders outside of their designated easement. Uh, appropriate notice single sent out for the public hearing held at Planning Commission. There will not be a public hearing, hearing, goodness, tonight.
Why are we not having a public hearing here? I know they had a planning commission, but why is it not?
It's part of the subdivision process. So with preliminary plats outside of minor subdivisions, preliminary plats are just public hearing at Planning Commission.
I just was wondering.
Yeah. So at Planning Commission, they held their public hearing. There's no public comment. The applicant was also, um, present for that meeting. Uh, the Planning Commission did discuss zerscaping requirements. If you saw, attached was the landscape plan and the staff report. And it shows on the north end of that meandering sidewalk is zerscaping. And then the south end, they have sod. Um, so we just, in the discussion called out in this, in the city standard, in the Highland city standard, um, it allows for parkway detail to be sod, planted grass or zerscape, which that's something we added fairly recently to allow for zerscaping in our parkway detail. And so their, um, argument was that we've added a lot of zerscaping and the city standard allows for some sod. And so they feel like they've done their due diligence to add zerscaping. Um, the Planning Commission ended up voting six zero to recommend approval of the proposed plat subject to these stipulations. The first three are pretty standard, just, um, tying some ends on, uh, civil plans. And then this fourth, we added specifically because we're working with plat red lines with these entities. And so any, we've already gotten our first round of red lines from them, but we'll have them review it again. And if we get any other comments, the stipulation just takes care of their comments being addressed in the recorded plat. And then here's the motion to approve. This is with the recommendations, the recommended stipulations from Planning Commission and then the possible motion to deny. And like I said, Eric Davenport is present. If you have any questions for him specifically.
Council, do you have any questions you want? Do you would like the applicant to come back up? Okay.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Maybe, maybe before we do, we have some public, I know this is not public hearing, but I'm going to open it up. If there's any public that'd like to make a comment on this subdivision plat, seeing none, we'll go ahead in the council. What would you like to do?
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Highland City Council accept the findings and approve the HHC Highland subdivision plat subject to the four stipulations recommended by the Planning Commission, which are listed in front of us here. I don't think I need to repeat those.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Scott, seconded by Kim. If there's no further discussion, we're going to go, go to vote. Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. Okay, we will now move on to, uh, our next item, which is an action item. It's a Highland Town Plaza parking configuration. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Um, so this is a request from WPI. We met a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the council has seen this site plan a couple of times. Basically, March thirtieth of last year, uh, the site plan and final plat and a property surplus, which if you remember, that's the building that's almost being done, constructed just north of Myers, west of Fizz. Um, and at that meeting, the applications ended up being continued to the April twentieth meeting. There was concerns about the traffic flow and the entirety of the site. And they, and the council wanted them to come back with solutions for that. And so they had a traffic engineer come up with, um, an ideal traffic flow for the site as a whole. Um, and once that was approved, part of the approval, there was a stipulation, this is exactly how it's worded, that the developer will install a new parking configuration south of Wendy's with striping only for parking stalls and south and landscaping islands. Um, south and landscaping islands will be installed when pad three is constructed. That's the final, their last pad in that area where you have the, um, snow cone shack right there right now. Um, this is the existing parking lot. There's that pad where the snow cones are. And as you can see, the, um, there was really old striping there. It's completely faded. And so you have cars parking in random places and you kind of have these two drive aisles that people just basically drive where there aren't cars. And so that's one of the concerns initially from the council last year was this area. Um, like I said, WPI is, well, they're requesting to adjust the parking configuration that was presented to the council when these approvals went through. So this option one, this was the original proposal. This is what the council saw before. And so you have this main access where basically it would curve drivers on the south end. And then we have this, um, little, um, striped island right here to direct drivers to follow that main curve. And then you have this additional parking for both Wendy's and this final pad. Um, option two is that basically they came in with the proposal that they would re-stripe technically what's there, but then adding, um, additional striping islands to still kind of try to direct drivers to go around rather than just through the parking stalls. Um, we, after discussion, came up with the possible option three, which would basically be, uh, rather than option two, a phasing of option one. Um, so instead of having them take out these landscaping islands that are existing, it would be keeping this existing parking on both sides of the landscaping right here and then having them do this southern phase. Um, the discussion was kind of, just because this, the option one is what will eventually happen with the construction of this pad right here. The idea was to just kind of train our residents to get used to this flow. And then when it comes time that the rest of the parking configuration comes through, that it won't be such a drastic change where people are still in the habit of driving across. Um, this is a possible motion to approve. Um, this, obviously you would have to insert either option two or option three. We have a couple of WPI representatives that are also present and I'm sure are happy to answer any questions or have discussion.
So just to clarify, the original plan has not changed. It's just the interim plan that we're trying to address, right?
Yes, this, no matter what, when this pad goes through, this, this is the, um, configuration that's on the master plan of the site from before. Um, so you're right, it would basically just be in the interim until this pad is built. How are we going to address this parking situation?
Or, or they, so one is, we don't have it, option one is not an option until that, that pad goes in, correct?
Technically, option one is what the council saw and what the council was expecting to them in full due. So they would technically have to remove, um, the landscaping that's right there and just paint these islands right here and these islands on the south end and just stripe here.
So help me understand why, why they can't do that now?
They'd probably be better to speak to that rather than me.
I'm, I'm just saying, we have option one, but you're saying, hey, that's options, not part of it. It has to be done sometime. We want to go to option two and three.
Yeah.
Good evening. Dan Schmidt with WPI, and that's a great question, Mayor. Um, the stipula- the original stipulation was for the building, as you may recall, of the current building on the west side of the Myers and just to the east of the substation there. And the specific stipulation of part of that approval was surrounding the traffic flow. It was the reconfiguration of some of that Wendy's parking lot, uh, associated with the certificate of occupancy for the building. Now, the, we do have a outstanding arrangement with Wendy's for the reconfiguration of that parking. If, uh, Kelly, you'd go to the slide that shows, shows it as existing today?
Isn't that option two?
Yeah, well, just, just the landscaping. That entire island there, uh, with parking on both sides is Wendy's lot. And that has, uh, electrical, uh, and other utilities, storm drain and other things kind of connected to that. And while the long-term plan is to sort of reconfigure that into the thing that we've seen with the, first of all, congratulations for the city in accomplishing the easement drive out to the west. That's huge and we really, really appreciate that. That construction, incidentally, will be starting hopefully anytime. Uh, we're just trying to get the contractor, the excavator to give us a start date, but that's ready to start. With the, with the easements came additional costs. Not that we're, we're not complaining about, the partnership's not complaining about any of that. Everyone's very, very happy about it. But with, uh, the cost of not just the easement side of that, that we agreed to split with the city and with Marsh Meyer, uh, the additional, uh, inflationary costs on those improvements, uh, ends up being about an extra twenty-five thousand more than the partnership had, uh, budgeted originally. And so the partnership does have financing in place, but with the easement and the road construction, inflationary pressures is additional forty thousand. And effectively isn't money to kind of tackle the, uh, the surveying and the engineering and the reconfiguration of the electrical and all those kinds of things. And so we had come to staff and asked if this council would entertain a proposal for, for a interim solution to be able to stripe, uh, that area, get the traffic flowing in a more appropriate manner. And then when we come back for the pad, what we're calling pad three, uh, all of those improvements will be done.
Any questions there?
I guess my question is, is, it sounds to me, Kelly, that the staff is kind of promoting option three because it's, it's a going towards option one.
Yeah, basically, the thought process was really just habit of the drivers. And right now, I honestly, I do the cut through every other day. And so I'm like, it would probably best to, be best to do a phasing option purely just to get people into the habit and kind of phase our habits into making that the norm.
Were you able, Kelly, so I, I'm up in this area quite a bit too. We, did you ever, I mean, I've been counting the cars that are parked in that middle. Because I, you know, we have the snow cone booth that's going there. So I, I've looked at, I've looked at the lunchtime. I've looking, you know, at, at all, you know, you know, the different flows there. And my, my concern about three is I think you have about fourteen parking spaces. And when I, when I went and counted there, you have twelve to fifteen cars there, you know, especially in the evening, if they're there at that snow cone booth. You know, they all, and I'm only looking in the middle, but most of those parking that were also on the Wendy's side was taken up. Yesterday, there was a backup coming, and I had not seen this before, a lot of backup that was actually backing, coming off of BSR into. Cars were stopped, they were trying to get into Wendy's. Then I looked over at Fizz and they had their backup and gone, oh boy, we've got cars that having made it into the Wendy's, you know, you know, drive-through thing, they're now backing up in that aisle. You know, and they had, I mean, it, there was a lot of traffic in that area. That was, I think, the concern originally on that. My only concern of op- option three, we don't, you're going to lose quite a bit of parking, uh, at this time versus if, you know, even if you stick with just option two, which is existing, uh, you lose quite a few parking spaces.
To your point, Mayor, I totally agree. Um, but another issue that we're trying to address is the Tuscon residents using that as overnight parking.
Oh, you mean like the trailer that always parks there? I think it's your property. Why haven't you done anything with the trailer?
I'm like, it's on this aerial too.
Yeah, we, we try. We talk to the, uh, the HOA. They're often about closing the gates. And we don't have an existing agreement with them. Um, I'm not sure why it was sort of put there in the first place.
If you can see, you already can see a car in that parking, they just, there's trailers and cars that just park there constantly. It's like they kind of figure that's where they're supposed to put their trailers and cars.
Uh, we had, uh, discussed that about, uh, striping the curb there, red and putting, you know, no parking signs as sort of, sort of additional, you know, notification of, uh, protected behavior.
So do you own all of that parking lot? I mean, why do they have an exit into that parking lot and feel like they can park in someone else's private property?
To my understanding, that exit, that gate is intended to be an emergency access and it just has become always open. So I.
We had, uh.
That's something we'll have to discuss.
Yeah.
We, we had suggested putting bullets and chains across and, and actually locking it, maybe giving it to the emergency services. They can, they can have the key. We don't care to necessarily use it in, in case of emergency, they can unlock it or something. don't care to necessarily use it in case of emergency, they can unlock it or something.
So is there any feedback on, for Dan, on any of the different proposals before you? Now, some of the parking also, we have to realize, because you were building the new building, also, you, it's hard maybe to judge all the parking now because it could be constrained as you're building that building.
Right.
And so we don't, you know, it's hard in the last month or two to look because I, I do believe Marsh Myers is probably encouraging some employees to park, or even, you know, all the others, just to try to get the, you know, to make sure they had parking around, if it be by FIZZ or by Myers, Beetz, and some things that way, so.
Correct, we've had the construction fencing about halfway through that parking lot in front of Myers to accommodate the construction there, and so that's obviously pushed people or maybe feel like they have to accommodate themselves on eastern parts of the parking in the, in the area, yeah.
Do you feel like, I was wondering if the problem is the lack of parking or if the problem is traffic flow? Because I almost feel like it's as much traffic flow as it is parking.
And we might, you know, we, we've worked with this road with Rocky Mountain Power to push it out to 5600 West, that might help some flow, you know, you, and now that you're getting the building kind of complete, maybe that will help open that parking up. I mean, it's hard, like you said, over the last, you know, four, you know, two to four months to really kind of gauge with this whole parking. I mean, I don't know if it'd be better to hold off. When's your building going to be opening there by Myers?
Just really quick, that was a stipulation on the approval, is that they had to complete this parking configuration for them to get their CVO, so it's, yeah.
That's a good catch. So in order for you to certificate occupancy, they have to do something with this parking?
I actually think option three is a really great option because there's going to be less parking, so it's hopefully going to discourage some of those less desirable behaviors and help people start to get used to the traffic flow as well as, like, the residents will need to find another place to park.
I'm fine with option three also.
I, I guess, I can understand the discussion here, because I was leaning towards option three, too, but I think the mayor brought, and he's there all the time because you work a half a block away. And I think you do bring up a valid point about there not being enough parking. But I, at the same time, I don't think WPI is obligated to provide parking for Toscana.
I agree.
And, and so I, I think that's a separate thing we need to discuss, but I think we need to address that because that's not really fair, because that's all private property, right?
Correct.
For your businesses.
And we can enforce the private parking either, it's really the property owner would have to enforce if there's some parking issues.
Right. But I think we can say we'd be supportive of that. Right?
So are, is everyone kind of leaning towards three? Is that what?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of, I share your concerns, so I'm going to lean towards two.
Just keeping consistent with what's already there?
Could you put two back up?
Could you put two back up, please?
Kelly, do you know what the difference is in the number of parking spaces between two and three?
There's a difference of nine between the two, I guess nine more in this one than in this one.
That's my recollection. And you're absolutely right, Mayor, and Council, there are, is more parking in option two. We just were thinking from a permanency standpoint, from the flow, we prefer option three, but, yeah.
Well, to another point, as far as parking requirements, technically, there's no building on this lot, therefore, there, like, we can't, we don't have a minimum number of parking that has to be on that lot.
Is there a motion or anything that the council would like to make? And then Dan, once that motion's over, I'd love an update on the building, if you can announce who tenants you have there or things that need to, we'd love to kind of get a little update.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve option three for the parking configuration south of Wendy's.
I'll second, oh, or Tim will second.
Oh, you get a second at Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Kim, second by Tim. We will now start with Kim.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
That passes four to one. Okay, Dan, would you mind just kind of give us a little update, what's kind of going on with that building there?
First, thanks for the consideration on the, on the parking stipulation. We look forward to finishing the existing building and bringing another user for the pad three. On the existing building, we have Coconut Grill who has taken space.
So they are going to be moving in?
They are going to be moving in, they have taken space and they're building it up, they've got about 150 acres.
Who is this again?
Coconut Island Grill, it's a Hawaiian, very good food.
Yeah. So they're on the interior end cap and utilizing the drive-through. The next space to them is currently being re-leased. There was a little conflict with some of Marsh's users that we agreed to acquiesce on. The next space up from him is a, is it Lash or Beauty?
Lash.
Lash. Say again, Kelly?
Yes.
That is Lash, yeah. Lash place, and the one on the end cap, the street-side end cap is ice cream.
So just when you say Lash, is that a, a beauty?
Like lash extensions.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I haven't tried them myself, Mayor, but maybe now.
And then you said the end user is ice cream?
Ice cream, yes.
And you're trying to retain it if you want to say space number two?
Correct.
So we have Coconut Island Grill, how soon do you think they'll be opened up?
In about another 120 days.
Okay, so you're going to turn the space over to them, once you get CVO, they guys still go and do their build-out inside?
Yeah, we have turned, turned over the space to them, so they've been in there maybe 30 days-ish, even though we don't quite have CVO yet, and, but they're probably another 120 before they're finished.
I have an important question.
Yes.
What is the ice cream franchise going to be?
Creamworks.
Creamworks? I haven't heard of that.
Is that a, is it a franchise, do you know?
I believe it is. I don't know, I shouldn't say, I don't, I don't know.
Creamworks slash Coconut Island Grill, and then another one?
Only we could have a cookie place there.
What? That, that, I, there's been some Facebook posts that people want to understand about that.
That was the tenant that we looked at.
Yeah, it was Doe Drop, I believe, so.
It's, it's a good thing.
Okay, anything else to ask, Dan? When you guys, you guys have your office building in front of, Bert Brothers, have you occupied that?
We have not, although the first tenant, complete contracting, occupying within 30 days, our particular space for our office will be about another six weeks, four to six weeks.
Is it just going to be two tenants?
No.
Okay, so the contracting does what? What, what type of business?
Construction.
Okay, so they're a construction company, then you can move WPI's offices, which are next to the...
Pizza Pie.
Pizza Pie over, over into the office, and do you have other tenants going in?
We do, we have Dr. Potts of Tim Pnogus Vision, they're in the existing office building, expanding his space further south, and then there's a dermatologist looking at the remainder of the bottom floor currently, no specific commitment.
You're hearing it first here? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you bringing businesses in. If you can just kind of work, you have an area that has a lot of movement and a lot of the people are, they're visiting, and so we appreciate coming in, but, you know, I, I think you know that, you know, we've had concerns with FIZZ, we've had with, you know, with the Wendy's and all that, so we appreciate you working through. Hopefully, the drive-through that is they have with Coconut Island Grill, that works out good, too.
Well, we're, again, we're very appreciative of, of the work on the easement. We couldn't have accomplished that by ourselves, and we, you know, I think we had mentioned we had tried, and we're excited for the light to go in there now, which I know the city's working on a few.
Yeah, just, just, because I don't know if we ever kind of discussed this, but I believe publicly if we did, but I believe it costs us right around 43,000, 43, 44,000 for an easement. The, the city owns and purchased from Rocky Mountain Power. WPI contributed 15,000 towards that. Myers Meats contributed 15,000, and the city contributed the rest, and we will own that. WPI will maintain and install that, that drive aisle that goes out to 5600 West.
Correct.
Yep.
We're excited about that, thank you.
Man, what a great deal.
Hopefully for all involved, hopefully it will move traffic in that business area and, and help us with everything there. Okay, let us now move on to item number 10. We have, it's an action item prioritizing encroachment policy enforcement. Kelly?
No, I'm sorry, what'd you say? No, I'm sorry, I just said I forgot about this one.
How can you figure about encroachment?
It's half my job, I know. Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Just a really short presentation for this, but prior council direction, on July 19th, just a couple of weeks ago, the city council adopted the, their encroachment policy and maintenance agreement. And in that same meeting, the council directed staff to bring this back today, August 2nd, for staff to receive direction on how to prioritize which encroachment, encroachments to enforce. We, in the report, just basically categorized some encroachments that we do see, and we sent the encroachment maps a day or two after city council. Basically, we have like our most egregious encroachments. I have several examples that are in the staff report, as photos and aerial images in the staff reports. And then we have our conservation easements, and then there are also encroachments along existing trails slash potential trails, and then we have a couple encroachments in parkland slash other city-owned property. This is the proposed motion. Basically, it's to direct staff to prioritize certain encroachments, whether they're by, like, specific neighborhoods or by encroachment type, or just specific encroachments that you'd like us to address. It's open for discussion for you all.
So I, I, I talked to staff and asked, and this is coming back from what I've heard from the council, is we didn't want to just send a letter out city-wide, we wanted to maybe choose one subdivision, go about it slow so we can see how the policy is enacted. We, we asked for, if there were some subdivisions that any of the council would recommend. When I asked, I hadn't, I don't think you'd received any feedback on any of that, and so I asked the council, is there, is there low-lying fruit? What we'd say is, you know, where there's encroachment issues that would be an easy enforcement, that would give us an, an easy approach into starting the encroachment policy. They recommend the Highland Hollow subdivision, which is in the west, I guess it would be the west, west, south end of the city, by our most western area of the city. Correct?
I'm just, I'm pulling up the PDS real quick.
So that's south and west of the new Dry Creek Dam and Lake?
Correct, so it's down the Dry Creek area. One of the reasons that maybe it was brought up is that has a lot of conservation easement area in it. So it wasn't just encroachment on city property, but they've also encroached into a conservation easement. We have several that have also landscaped down that area, so we thought that that might be an easier approach, say, hey, we've got a conservation area, you know, we want you to kind of, you can't be, you've made some changes in the conservation easement, we need to, you know, that area, we need to have that, that, you know, enforced there. But that was one of the areas that we kind of thought that might be a good area to start. And because there's also no area down there that would be available to sell or to do a maintenance agreement because it's conservation area. Does, does that make sense? So it kind of helps us get out a little easier as a start.
Well, when we talked about the encroachment agreement two weeks ago, I was the one that suggested that we do it in little sections rather than just blanket the city, because I thought it would be easier on the staff. And then I think you'll learn from the first places where you do this, because you may get, like, total compliance, I'd be surprised, but at the same time, it'd be nice to kind of focus the effort. So I think if you want to start with Highland Hollow, I could support that. I think Mercer Hollow and the pirate ship could probably be addressed pretty soon.
What Scott's referring to, we have a resident that has built a pirate ship playhouse on city property.
I have no problem with the ship, it's just the working cannons that are bothering me. But I, I do have a serious question.
Okay.
Kelly, how do, how do we quantify or define egregious, or is that just a general consensus and opinion?
It was general consensus. Typically, I'm, like, if we see big structures or a cer, over a certain square footage, I mean, most of these are about a half acre, so we determine those in opinion that they're large.
But I like the idea of going neighborhood by neighborhood rather than egregiousness as a metric.
I'm fine with Highland Hollows.
I'm, I'm fine with their opinion, too, so I was just curious what the...
Did you want, did you want, start with Highland Hollows, and then did you want us to put together a proposed list of, I'm happy to do that.
If you could, that would be amazing.
Yes, I would love to do that.
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, so it sounds like council's headed toward a motion to do Highland Hollows, but then after that, we'll work with council member bills to prioritize the future encroachment enforcement, after we learn from and make any changes necessary from our first.
Yeah, but I'm like thinking, like, let's move it along, not drag it out, right? Like, see what we can learn, but then let's move it along.
Now, let's be very, you know, open on Highland Hollows. There's been some that have put retaining walls in this area that, as staff have looked at it, it might be beneficial for them not to take out the retaining walls because it helps with retaining some of the floodplain down in that area. And so if that's, if it's okay with, if this could be the subdivision, that we might look and, and based off of staff, we might say, we don't want your watering, you can't be on it, but we don't want you to remove your, if you've done a retaining wall, to keep that in to help with some, you know, flood, flood control. Am I understanding that correctly, Andy? I, I think that was your recommendation.
So what you're saying is, if we look at these individually, we can be flexible?
On, on, they, they can't keep control of it, they can't keep watering it, but they might have done some improvements that we might say, we are going to look and say, we believe that benefits the city, and we don't want you to take that rock retaining wall out because it helps with the flood, floodplain down there.
So if you, but as you do this, you do set, set up precedence, and, and so I think that's fine. I agree with that, because I've always been one to believe in a little bit of flexibility, but this actually would set up a precedent for some of the retaining walls, I mean, twin bridges. So I, I think you, yeah.
But I think the, the policy has taken care of that correctly, because it's benefiting the city.
Correct.
So I think that is the guiding star, is to say, this is benefiting the city, but if we find another retaining wall that is not benefiting the city, it's got to come out. So I think that's the guiding star, so everyone is treated, you know, with equity. And then I also just wanted to add, I know that there's some people who are in the beginning stages of, or the middle stages of their encroachment. Are we still going to address those residents to make sure it doesn't go any further? Because there's just going to be more expense, more damage to the residents if we allow that to continue.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Councilman Peterson, so when, when we, when staff gets complaints or we learn that somebody is in the process of building, yes, we'd absolutely at that point, you know, go through the process with them. Or I think if we, like, we actually have a, had an issue come up today where basically what they're asking for is a maintenance agreement, and again, we'll process it now rather than making them wait until we get to their subdivision.
But we can move through these pretty quickly.
I, I think, yes, we want to start applying, and like you said, we might find out, uh-oh, we, we need to do, we need to enforce it a little different way, because we don't recognize, you know, there's uniqueness in different properties, since we wanted to start to understand the policy. I've asked Rob to kind of maybe put, so if the council's okay, we've asked our attorney to put the letter together, I'm planning to send the letter, but we're going to direct, if there's questions on, on things, we're going to let them be aware that the council's determined there's no property down here that's for sale, and that there's not a maintenance agreement that's available on any of this property because it's conservation easement. We'll then direct, if there's other questions, to have them get ahold of the planning department in the city, but, but that's kind of the process, what we're thinking is having it come from the mayor and already letting them be aware, we've already determined there's no area to be sold. This isn't the easy one, because it's conservation, we can't sell it anyway. That, that, you know, we've also determined there's not going to be any maintenance agreements because it's a conservation area, we can't do maintenance agreements.
I think it's a great place to start.
So, is that okay? Is that, is there at least, is the majority of the council in agreement in the approach that way into Highland Hollows? Do I think we have a motion here?
Sorry, there is one other thing that, as we were implementing our policy, we, a couple of clarifications. We, we talked about the recording fee. We confirmed with the county that they currently have a policy of not charging municipalities a recording fee, so, so far, you, you approved the fee of $25 plus any recording fee, so far, that fee will be zero. We're going to leave it in our, the...
Policy?
In the policy and in the schedule, the fee schedule as $25 plus any applicable recording fee, just in case Utah County changes something with that. So, so now the fee is currently just going to be 25.
I think that is great news.
Yeah, it is great news, and we'll let the citizens know that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the second, and I think this was me miscommunicating part of the maintenance agreement to you all last time we talked, the maintenance agreement as written... The maintenance agreement as written says it will terminate upon the sale or transfer of the property to someone else. I think I might have told you that it will continue through and just expire at the five-year term. I wanted to make sure we were following whatever the council wanted to do. Basically, do you want it to terminate when someone sells their house? It's already recorded on the property, so they'll know it in their title search if someone goes to sell. So they'll know. But the agreement says it'll just terminate and then the next person who buys will have to reapply. Or do you want it to continue through that transfer and then have it be a, just it expires at the end of that five-year term?
It's a right of property in a sense.
Right.
I'm fine with it continuing.
I like it continuing too a little bit because I think it'll be confusing because a lot of people will think they have an agreement, but it's terminated. They may not understand that. I'd have it continue until it officially terminates.
Scott's continue, Kim's continue. I need one more council person to give input.
Okay, so I've got... That is how I explained it to you, that it would continue, so.
Yeah, so to continue, if they entered a five-year agreement, it continues on the property. It does not terminate at the time of sale. Is that what all the council understood? And I've got three councils, Tim, Kim, and Scott, that you are supporting that.
Right, but if it's recorded at the county, even though we're not a fee, the people should know that that's there, right?
Yes.
And so that's what's...
They'll run their title if they'll get the title.
That was our big, one of our big concerns that when the property was sold, a lot of times people that bought it didn't know what was there and what wasn't. So I think that's important. Hopefully, the title companies will do their job.
Do we have a motion on item number 10?
Well, is the motion set up, though, that we can prioritize just one neighborhood? I thought the motion was set up that we had to prioritize the types of encroachment.
Sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
I was just going to say that because the council discussed the Highland Hollow, you could call out that specific one being the first one. And then to my understanding, council member bills was going to continue on and provide a list to staff to continue on with the next neighborhoods.
So if you're, is there a motion?
I moved that the city council direct staff to prioritize the following encroachments, starting with the Highland Hollows neighborhood and then continuing with council member bills providing a prioritization list to staff. Does that work?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kim, second by Sarah. Let's go ahead and go to a vote. We will have Sarah, what's your vote?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
As a five-zero. Brittany, you just took a bottle.
You're doing so good with the names tonight.
I know, we do.
Mayor and Council. Just one little other note on encroachments. Staff realized today, we actually have municipal code that outlines encroachment policy. And so kind of as a wrap-up to all of this, that'll be brought back for some amendments to that code, probably next council meeting for you as well to apply to the new policy that council's adopted.
Okay.
Or it might take a little while as Kelly might be going out of town. So we'll get it to you, though.
We still have summer. Okay, we're now moving to item number 11, which is a construction contract for the Highland Glen Park Pavilion improvements. Andy?
So Mayor and Council, when we talked about Highland Glen a couple of months ago, you go to the next slide. Councilman Smith brought up, can't we do something about the pavilion? Rocks are falling off, et cetera. And so we took that hard as staff and met with, Josh had actually been meeting with a couple of masons that had specialty in this type of structure over the last little while trying to find some rocks. And that was another contractor who I was familiar with. And tried to just get him there to say, you know, that this was a contractor that become a general contractor and had spent his life being a mason, grew up with his dad being, you know, doing masonry, et cetera. And I knew he had a lot of knowledge on this area. So we brought him here and tried to say, hey, can we, you know, find some of this rock and fix this? And he did some checking and kind of concurred with the folks that Josh had checked with, which is nobody knows where to get this rock. And so at that point, yeah, sorry, at that point, you know, we kind of started brainstorming, well, what do we do now? You know, and what this contractor came up with is a suggestion, you know, we thought was a pretty good suggestion because you've got this wall that you can see in the photo and the area of the wall that the rocks are still solidly on is actually a couple of feet above the adjacent grade. So the floor elevation of the existing structure is kind of in the line where you see that most of the rocks are still holding there. And so can we go to the next picture? So what this contractor suggested, he said, what if you came back and you put in a railing? So you can still help, but so people don't fall off that grade. But by cutting in the railing, we could harvest all the rocks that are in the areas where we are putting, you know, putting the railings in. And then we'll use those stones to then put back on the rest of it. And so that way, we keep the period look of the rock. We keep the same, you know, basic architectural integrity and we find a source for the rock. We kind of become our own source. You know, with the, if your parameters are that it's important to preserve the historical integrity of the pavilion, this seemed like, as we kind of kicked it around, that this seemed like the best solution. There are certainly other solutions, you know, and relative to cost, I don't know what those costs would be. You could do some things to modernize the structure, you know, but potentially, you know, change out all the rock to a stockow or something like that. Don't know what those would cost, but I suspect they're going to be very similar in cost or maybe even a little bit more. So this is, you know, like I said, under that auspices that, that, you know, hey, we want to keep the look and feel of this pavilion the same, this appears to be, you know, the best solution. This was not considered in our current budgeting efforts. You know, the budget was well underway by the time we got to this. But there is money in the Parks Capital Fund that we could do it with. And while it is a significant amount of money and it's almost 17,000, it's something that we can, that we can accommodate. So we bring it to you as a possible solution, you know, for the issue, certainly acknowledging the issue and having vetted it a little bit and saying, well, ideally, I'd love to go just say, hey, let's, well, this is where we started. Let's just go find some of that rock and put it back together. Let's make it look how it always looked. But that doesn't appear to be a possibility. And so at this point, this is the best idea we've got, you know, to date. And so we bring it for you, for your consideration in an attempt to answer the request by the council, which was, you know, hey, won't you please go find a solution to what we can do here at the park and how we can get this looking a little better?
So I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I want to thank you because there's been discussion of fixing this pavilion up for years and nothing's ever been done. So I appreciate you just kind of taking the bull by the horns and looking at options. I think this is a great option. This park is heavily used by the citizens. Will be more heavily used as we have this big development to the east of it. And I think this pavilion probably already is heavily used. And I think fixing it up is kind of the face of Highland because a lot of people come from all over. And in the discussion items, I'm going to bring up an idea that how we can raise some money on this park. But at the same time, I support it 100% and I appreciate your effort. I think it's reasonable. I've been in the process of renovating the house or in Pleasant Grove that was my grandparents'. I've got some ornamental iron. I have, I have a good idea how much it costs and this is really pretty economical. And so I appreciate this and I support it wholeheartedly. Which means I get voted down, but anyhow.
If there's no other discussion, we could go to motion.
I'll make that motion. I move that the city council approve a construction contract with LGL Construction in the amount of $16,995,000. Did I say that right? Yeah, $16,995,000. I'm not saying that right, whatever what it says there, $16,995,000, right. For the repairs, that's like fiscal or physical, right? For the repairs of the Highland Glen Park Pavilion.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Scott, second by Kim. We'll now go to vote. Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Five to zero. We will now move on to our communication items. The first communication item, we have a trail maintenance plan by you, Andy.
Yes, sorry, I was making my notes. So council, last time we met, two weeks ago, we passed you out the trail plan. And I mentioned when I passed it out that it was quote-unquote frozen in time, you know, somewhere between 2020 and 2021. And that the economics that were reflected there, you know, were basically 2020 prices and the conditions of the trail, et cetera, were 2020 prices. And since that time, we've actually done a lot of maintenance and a lot of silk coats on the trails. And we started talking about it as a staff and saying, okay, you know, given what we know and what we've done, what are our 2020, fiscal year 23 projects? And realizing that, you know, the best thing, unless the council is, you know, just wants something adopted, is, you know, let's, let's take a couple of months and let's bring this forward to 2023 dollars and reflect the maintenance that we have done over the last couple of years in the plan. And kind of so that when we adopt it, we're adopting it in a current version, if you will. And I wanted to just bring that past the council and see what you think about that. Also, give you the opportunity to, you know, if you have a chance to glance through it, give us any feedback from kind of how those trails have been prioritized, et cetera. So just more of a discussion item to say, you know, are you okay if we give it, give it a couple of months and bring it current? And also, did you have any feedback for us on what you saw?
Yes, take a couple of months, bring it back, update.
Okay, we are, you know, we are planning the maintenance program for '23. So we did all the work in Highland Glen, we did that at $22 and some Parks Capital money. They're still finishing some of it around the lake. We had some delays because of all the concrete shortages and everything, but we're getting there. So that was $22. And so we are planning with our '23 budget a maintenance program. And so we will be looking towards that in the spring because we do want, if we have that money in the budget, we want to get it spent and get in the ground on the trails, right? And so we will be actively planning that. And so we'll bring it back to you in a couple of months.
Thanks for doing it the right way. I appreciate that.
Any other input, Andy, on that? Yo, before we jump to my item number 12B, Andy, you brought, I think there was an item you wanted to discuss in the Dry Creek Circle?
I do, yeah. And I just wanted to give the council a little update. And you may, and we've started construction on Dry Creek Circle. And it's gone slower than we had anticipated. And if any of you want to appreciate, not that you haven't been out, maybe didn't visit Victor View, or appreciate just how impactful to residents a sewer construction project is, you can drop in on Dry Creek Circle. Because when you go and you take a, you know, even though 34 feet of asphalt, that's where our standard minimum road is, sounds like a lot of room. When you take big tractors and a, you know, 14-foot deep trench and all the dirt and everything that goes into that, it's very impactful to the neighborhood. And so I wanted just to talk with the council and say, hey, construction hasn't gone perfectly to date. It hasn't gone according to schedule. We've been in the intersection, we've been in, we've been infringing on people's lives, you know, and we knew where we were going to. It's just taken a little bit longer. And so I want to give you a little bit of heads up is like, we're aware that the residents are concerned and we are working with the construction team to try and make sure that they are leaving the trenches safe over the weekends and that they are...
But do you want to put a picture?
You bring up the neighborhood.
Yeah, can we just get a picture to make sure everyone knows exactly where we're talking about the Dry Creek Circle area is at?
Yeah, the park, there you go. Yeah, so can you zoom out just a little bit so we can see where we are? So on the right is 6,000 West and kind of on, we highlight Dry Creek.
That's 6,000, that's, yes.
Yeah, so 6,000 West is a major north-south road on the, on the right. That's where Dry Creek comes through. So you're kind of in the, in the dip, if you will, of 6,000 West. And where we are working right now is in the intersection, right there where Dry Creek Circle intercepts. I believe that's Riverbend Road right there. And we've been in that intersection for, I don't know, 10 days to two weeks. And it's, and we're trying to get things out of that intersection. But it's, you know, and it's as we told the folks in Country Club, you know, and we are, you know, we're going to do all we can to make it as friendly as we can for Country Club. But when we do construction in areas with limited access cul-de-sacs, you know, there's only one way in, one way out. And everybody has to get into their home around the construction. They got to get out from their home around the construction. It's not easy. And we're doing all we can and we're spending a lot of time with the contractors trying to make it better. But, you know, I want to give you a little heads up that you may get some feedback for some residents that are going to start be getting, they're, people are getting a little tired of it. And we're going to do all we can to lessen it and get out of there as quick as we can. But it's not a fun process for them or for us. It's just tough.
So Sarah, this is near where you live. Don't you live in Dry Creek Beach?
Yeah, it's quite.
So what has been your perception and what are people saying? Because I think they would talk to you pretty quickly.
I haven't heard anything negative so far, but I was going to tell Andy, just thanks for the heads up. I like the heads up rather than being surprised.
I mean, I think the Lewis's live right in that one little street thing there. So I can, I'll reach out to them and see what they... I think Dana Lewis and her husband, I think that's where they, they live, right in that area.
Yeah, it's, it's been tough. And we're, we're moving now, but it's going really slow. And like I said, if you, if you just want to, just for nothing else than getting appreciation for what, what these folks are going through, drop past and you can kind of get a taste of it. But hopefully it'll start going better and we'll go a little smoother. But yeah, it's, it's somewhat of a precursor to Country Club. You know, at Country Club, we've got 124 homes. There's only one way in, or I don't know if it's 124, 123, but you know, we've got 120 homes-ish. And we're, we're going to learn some lessons here with the same contractors doing it over there. Hopefully, we'll, you know, do it better. But yeah, these are just challenging. They're very challenging.
Thank you for, so if we can just be sensitive, if we know residents in that area or even visit and maybe talk to someone on the streets, so thank, let's be aware of that.
Thank you, Andy, for the heads up and thanks for the work on the trails, too. That's great.
A lot of, lot of work. You know, council, you know, with some things, if we can be a little cautious about trying to do in the next, you know, couple of months, any new projects or things. As we know, we're doing some adjustments with, with staff and they're, they're all picking up the pieces. But let's just be sensitive that we're doing it. The next item is our Highland Fling update. I kind of thought, do we, do we know, Erin, did we get our shirts today? I know they were hoping to be delivered. I don't know if they ever came in.
Oh, maybe Jeff has them.
They're sitting right here.
Oh, Jeff has them.
Okay, I'll get them to you as soon as the meeting's over.
So if you guys will make sure you get your shirts. We had our HOV show last night. We decided, it was decided because of some lightning concerns. From what it appeared, as we're looking at forecasting, that they canceled the event from last night because of lightning concerns. Tim, I have you down. We had the search project at 10:00 AM. We had our baby celebration. Did everything go okay? I didn't, do you have any?
Things went well today. Overall, we had good attendance numbers. We were happy, so.
And then, Tim, did you go to the Horseshoes?
We have a meeting tonight.
The Horseshoes?
No, here.
Oh, I know. Is it?
No.
Okay, I just, I just wasn't sure your name was on anything.
I was going to go.
I know, I, so we, okay, the next item, so tomorrow night, we have the kids. It is at the Splash Pad. It's kind of the kids' night. The library will be helping us.
Yeah.
Any that, there we need to be aware of, Kim?
No, the library is always on the ball. They got it all, they always have it together.
Okay, on Thursday night, we have the backyard garden tours. I'd encourage, we heard about that tonight, just to encourage those, would like to go attend those.
And I think for the art show, isn't that the open house for the, or for the...
It's the artist reception Thursday night as well at 7:00.
So that, myself and Sarah are going tomorrow at 10:00 AM. If there's another council person that would like to join us, we're going to go choose the city awards and the art show. So if there's anyone else that wants, we just have one more, join us at 10:00 AM over at the community center. We're going to go and choose the art for the city. So we have on Friday...
For the art for the city?
Well, it's the art show for the arts council. We're going to choose the city awards.
Oh.
We have city awards that are given out. So if you want to participate that...
I probably shouldn't.
Yeah, that means we might have some artwork from Scott. Don't tell us which one, we'll get over there, we'll have to guess which one's Scott's.
Yeah, I don't write my...
I think when we start nailing it, they go, well, you can't choose that one with Scott. I think when we started nailing it, they go, oh, you can't choose that one with Scott's. He was, well, I don't think you should do that. So Scott's an artist. We encourage all to go over and see his artwork there at the art show. On Friday, we have our playdate rodeo.
So excited, so excited for the rodeo. My daughter will be riding. Paramedics will be standing by. I'm very excited about the rodeo.
Okay, we have that. We had the disc golf tournament. If you've, I'm going to show up to that. If you've not ever been up there to Beacon Hills Park and never seen the disc golf, disc golf course, it is really kind of amazing to see some of the shots they do and the layout of that course. That night, we also have the youth movie night and I believe they're doing Mega Mind, is that right?
Yes.
Mega Mind. That will be at the Heritage Park. And we also have the fine art show at the community center from four to eight PM that night. So then we have on Saturday, we have, of course, the parade at ten. Now, do we need to choose? Does anyone, in the past, they've kind of had the council go try to choose some different awards. I've been up where they've asked the council to do it. I've had it where the parade committee kind of did it. Does anyone know any input if they're going to have council try to do it or?
I will have Miranda follow up with you all on that. I'm not sure.
Okay.
What time do we need to be there at and where?
So it starts at the Highland Elementary. I think we probably ought to be there no later than like nine twenty, just so we can, because we'll be at the very first parade. Jake, do we know if, what, do we have a fire truck for the city council?
Nine twenty?
It will not be the tower. So will we, so will we be walking behind the fire trucks?
I think, I think the engine that we have, we can get on.
Okay. Is Brittany driving?
Absolutely.
I'm not kidding on. Did you write that down? Brittany is driving the truck. Thank you.
The fire truck. I think you need to be.
Okay, so we, so we'll have some, the city council will be, you'll have that towards the front that we will be with, that the city council will have the signs on, we'll either be riding on it or walking by it. We have candy, I believe that will be.
How much candy?
We need more.
I can throw candy while I'm driving. Drive with my right hand, throw candy with my left.
That is against our parade regulations, so I think you have to choose.
The driver cannot throw candy.
So let me throw a little monkey wrench in here. I'm in a big practice and we all take a weekend a couple times a year and they signed me this weekend and I haven't been able to get out of it. So I will not be the parade.
Okay.
But, and so you can split up my candy amongst the rest of you. I really feel bad, too, because I was looking forward to it, but I'm going to try to arrange things so that I can come and be in the booth from two to five, because I want to participate and I enjoyed, of course, last year I was campaigning, but I enjoy that and the interaction and especially talking about the park and things. So I wanted to apologize. I tried to get out of this deal, but I can't.
So Stephanie, bringing that up, will, will there be a notice stating that we will be possibly having a quorum of city council together, walking the parade and maybe at the booth? Is that a notice we need to do?
You know, I have to look at that today and I didn't see any notice. But we did the last, come on years of, well, if I'm wrong, this is considered a social, or should I go and hear a notice to?
It never hurts to do it.
Especially this year when we have booth and we're going to have posters about things going on, I'd say let's do it.
I, I would agree. So that leads into the next thing. So we have a booth, we're going to have two, so there'll be the city booth and then we have two booths for the city council. In that booth, what the thought is, we'd have about ten different boards. We're going to have an overview of the Mountain Ridge Park and it will be fairly large, it will show the whole park design. We'll have the Sontag Playgrounds that will be the playground going in. And then we will also have a fundraiser, great big poster that will talk about how we're fundraising. Kim, as mentioned, she'll kind of help get that, that put together. We'll then have some flyers that if they wanted more information as well as a sign-up. And this is for fundraising, this will kind of be a time. But they'll be able to kind of ask us questions about the Mountain Ridge Park, about the playground and kind of engage. We will then also have areas that we have had, and I appreciate staff doing this, Andy has spent some time with Mike. We also have our old roadmap of like the old projects, the what years the road project will be done. And then we have the updated of what's been completed and what still needs to be completed from our road projects. It just appears when residents come in, they always want to know where their road's at, is it going to be done? So we have mapping of that. We then also are going to have another poster on our tax increase or our fee increase. This is what it was, this is what it was going to. So if the residents want to engage us and ask, you know, any questions on that, they have that information before them. Though, and then that was kind of what we were putting together. The one that has the donor, the donation about the park will have donor levels if they want to donate for like a pavilion or like a, what they're, if they have naming rights or if they're going to be on the, the park, you know, great big, you know, the great big entrance area. So we'll try to have some information. Is there any other things that you felt would be pertinent to have in that booth that I've not spoken about?
I think Rob should have a booth.
Legal advice?
Yeah.
Pre-legal advice.
Pre-legal advice for us.
Tim would be taking up his time. No.
Is there anything else?
What would be the liability involved with that?
It's a conflict of interest for me.
Do you, you know, I actually have a map. Do we want to have anything at Dry Creek Lake Park? Dry Creek Lake Park's kind of on hold right now until, what will happen is this fall, all the water will go out. Lehigh is going to go and put a clay liner on it. I mean, we can, we've had it for, I think, the last couple of years, but I don't know. If we wanted to focus in on Mountain Ridge?
I would focus because it's hard to get people to come over and talk to anyway. I'd focus on the Mountain Ridge Park.
So that, and then we'll kind of, if we get creative, I'm thinking of putting little mice on certain things and have the kids, if they can go count how many mice are on the posters and tell us the number, maybe we'll have like a little tree to prize. That way, when the parents come, we can tell the kids to, how they can engage in the booth. And maybe kind of see what they can kind of, that way, maybe get the parents and the kids engaging. Our whole thing is, this is our opportunity with the public, it's kind of like an open house.
Does it have to be mice? Like, can we do something a little?
Is there another suggestion, another character?
Squirrels? I don't know.
A wild monster squirrel. How about a snake?
We could do, in honor of Highland Fling, we could do little Scottish men or something for little stickers.
I like the Scottish.
That's great.
Okay. Any other questions about the Fling?
I just, I got a text from Miranda, I didn't notice until now. She wants to apologize so that the shirts are here except for council member Bill's for some reason. So she's got to call the company tomorrow and find out.
That's because mine has a special fire truck logo on it. It's awesome.
In addition, they are not what she, they, the quality is not the level that she ordered. So again, something she's working on with the company, so we're sorry, but.
What does that mean?
It just is a lower quality shirt than we ordered.
It's see-through. It's a sizey guy. Oh, boy. Baby Jeff, show us the shirt.
That's why they're hiding over here. There is a sticky note apologizing to Brittany right here. This is your shirt for now.
We are green.
Well, that would look good.
I'd like our scouts, though.
Well, we are kind of.
I'm sure if they're firm to the material. They are somewhat. See-through.
Okay, anyway, council, is there any other things that need to be come as a communication item? Scott, you mentioned you might have a communication item.
Well, and I shared this with the council and I actually got some feedback from Kim and a bit from Brittany, but one of our residents made a suggestion that I thought we could at least look into. You know, we've oftentimes talked a little bit about the fact that in Highland Glen Park, we have a lot of non-residents that use that park. And I think that's fine, but we've kind of thought over the years, is there a way that we could maybe establish some sort of fee? I mean, we talked about a booth and the impossibility of doing that and things. But he actually suggested, and I guess they do this in another city, that apparently maybe once during the day, I don't know if it's the police department or who does this, because I haven't looked at all the logistics, but they actually come in and look at license plates. And if their, if their, if their residence isn't in Highland or in the city, then actually they kind of set up a fee and charge them. So, you know, I don't know the legality of that, but it's, it's just an idea. And apparently they do it in another city. And I thought it was a suggestion at least to look into. So, because it would be nice with the heavy use of that park by non-residents, if we could collect a little bit of fees to help improve it. Because there's a lot, I mean, the trails, the pavilion, the lake and different things, but there are a lot of areas in that park that could be developed with some more picnic tables or upgrading the ones we have, maybe put in a sports field or something. I don't know, just an idea. So I, you looked at it, Kim, and seemed to think it was an okay suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to your, your neighbors about it and they've always suggested that since they're the ones who are going and cleaning up the area every day.
Right.
I mean, traditionally, you have to be careful of the cost to employ the employee to, you know, you're collecting more. But one of the things we're going to notice, I think the park is doing it, I know Spring Bill does, I think if you go down into their park, I think residents get in, you know, free of charge, non-residents don't. I don't know how they collect that. Dry Creek Lake is going to be a fee park. And I don't know once, maybe we'll have some pull off of the, down Highland Glen and go over to Dry Creek. I don't know if that will.
Maybe not. There's such, I mean, Typle Fork's always packed.
Yeah, I, I know they're worried, well, because Typle Fork, you have to pay to enter and they're thinking some might walk in to down to Dry Creek. I mean, well, I don't know if that would help us with some things, but we always can look into it. I don't know if there, is there enough interest from the council to look into doing a fee down at Highland Glen or is it something you want to wait to see what the impact is once Dry Creek comes in or?
I, I just think there's a need to fix that park up all the time and we just need more funds. I don't know.
I'm fine looking into it, seeing what other cities do, how, how you can do it without, to generate revenue instead of, you know.